October 25, 2010, meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfil?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Is excused. We begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. So if there is anyone who would like to offer public comment on a non-agenda item, if you would, please come to the center microphone, give us your name, your address, and your comment, please. If there is not, then we will move forward with the consent agenda. Would any Board member like to remove for separate discussion or action any of the individual items on this evening's consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Before we vote on the consent agenda, I would like to offer an opportunity for public comment with respect to any of the items on this evening's consent agenda. And if there is none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfil?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes. Next, we move on to recognitions. Mr. Croner?
Thank you. Two students from Wauwatosa West High School have received honors for their academic success from the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Senior Darian Jefferson has been named a 2011 National Achievement Program Outstanding Participant, and Senior Morgan Sigloff has been named a National Hispanic Recognition Program 2010-2011 Scholar. The National Achievement Scholarship Program is an academic competition established in 1964 by the National Merit Scholarship Program to provide recognition for outstanding Black American high school students. Established in 1955, National Merit Scholarship Corporation is an independent, not-for-profit organization that operates without government assistance. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation conducts the National Merit Scholarship Program and the National Achievement Scholarship Program, annual competitions for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships. The National Hispanic Recognition Program was initiated in 1983 by the College Board to identify outstanding Hispanic Latino high school students and to share information about them with interested colleges and universities. The College Board is a not-for-profit membership association whose mission is to connect students to college success and opportunity.
Wauwatosa West High School senior Austin Kautzer has completed all requirements, received National Boy Scouts America approval, and has earned the rank of Eagle Scout. This is the 150th Eagle rank awarded by Boy Scout Troop Number 21 in their 88 years of scouting in Wauwatosa.
So congratulations once again to our students recognized this evening. Next, we move on to our action items, and Mr. Meyer, I believe you get to start. Take a deep breath and proceed if you would.
I put my glasses on. It is recommended that the School Board approve the attached approved 2010-2011 budget. Fund expenditures are summarized as follows. Revising the 2010-2011 school district budget, whereas Chapter 65, Paragraph 90, Subparagraph 5A Wisconsin statutes requires the School Board by a two-thirds vote of the entire membership to approve alteration made to the previously adopted 2010-2011 budget, and whereas the School Board adopted a 2010-2011 expenditure budget on June 14, 2010. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board does hereby make the following alterations to the 2010-2011 expenditure budget. General Fund 10, previously approved at $73,612,292, adjusted by a positive $3,536,219, giving a revised budget amount of $77,148,511. Donation Fund 21, previously approved at $90,500, no adjustment, giving a revised amount of $90,500. Special Education Fund 27, previously approved at $12,695,741, adjusted by a negative $724,128, giving a revised amount of $11,971,613. Non-Referendum Debt Service Fund 38, previously approved at $284,885, adjusted upward by $2,672,889, giving a revised amount of $2,957,774. Capital Expansion Fund 41, previously approved at $1,480,000, adjusted upward by $377,100, giving a revised amount of $1,857,100. Food Services Fund 50, previously approved at $2,183,181, adjusted downward by $96,856, giving a revised amount of $2,086,325. Recreation Department Fund 80, previously approved at $1,540,171, adjusted downward by $3,315, giving a revised amount of $1,536,856. Total expenditures for all funds, previously approved at $91,886,770, adjusted upward by a total amount of $5,761,909, giving a revised budget of $97,648,679. All of that less inter-fund operating transfer from Fund 10, previously approved at a negative $5,794,380, adjusted by a negative $2,671,586, giving a revised budget of a revised inter-fund operating transfer amount of $8 million, negative $8,465,966, $92,390, with an adjustment of $3,090,323, giving a revised budget of $89,182,713. Setting of the tax levy, the resolution, whereas Sections 120 dot 10, 120 dot 12, Subparagraph 3, and 120 dot 44, Subparagraph 2, Wisconsin statutes authorize and require the School Board to determine the amount of money that's necessary to be raised through taxation to operate and maintain the schools of the Wauwatosa School District. And whereas Sections 120 dot 10, Subparagraph 10M, and 120 dot 44, Subparagraph 2, Wisconsin statutes authorize the School Board to vote a tax to create a fund for the purpose of financing current and future capital expenditures related to buildings and sites. And whereas Section 120 dot 12, Subparagraph 3, Wisconsin statutes requires the school district clerk to certify to the city clerk of the city of Wauwatosa the amount so determined, and whereas the School Board is interested in complying with the foregoing statutory requirements. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board does hereby determine that $43,863,984 shall be necessary to be raised through taxation to operate and maintain the schools of the school district for the 2010-11 school year. Be it further resolved that said money shall be allocated and utilized as follows. General Fund, previously approved at $43,841,764, adjusted downward by $2,627,860, giving a revised amount of $41,213,904. The General Fund prior year's uncollected levy, previously approved at $135,339, with no adjustment, giving $135,339. Non-Referendum Debt Service Fund, previously approved at $281,185, with no adjustment, giving $281,185. Capital Expansion Fund, previously approved at $1,480,000, with no adjustment, giving a revised amount of $1,480,000. Recreation Department, previously approved at $756,871, adjusted downward by $3,315, giving a revised amount of $753,556, giving totals of a previously approved amount of $46,495,159, adjusted downward by $2,631,175, giving a revised total of $43,863,984, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, and thank you, Mrs. Weber. We have a motion and a second on the table. Mr. Mack, you have some information to share.
Okay. I'm going to get started just before I ask any questions as I'm going through this. At the end of the financial piece, Dr. Erdl will talk a little bit about the relationship budget and the educational achievement in the district. I start off with the levy, and as you can see, the General Fund, about $41.2 million, non-referendum debt, $281,000. Total levies about $43.7 million, and compared to last year, $42,168. It's about $1.56 million more than it was last year. The General Fund alone is going up about 3.63 percent. The non-referendum debt is going down slightly, .73 percent. The Capital Expansion Fund, we added a little bit money to that fund for building maintenance. That's going up 5.71, and the Recreation Department is going up 38,000, or about 5.3 percent. This doesn't include the prior year uncollected tax, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But that's 3.7 percent is a lot lower than I had anticipated. And there are some factors that I'll talk about going into this, but kind of steered the entire budget and our spending in a direction so we would maximize our aid that we receive from the state. And things kind of broke our way a little bit this way. So hopefully, I don't know what's going to happen next year, but this year, in perspective, I'll go through what that means to the average homeowner. A little bit down the line here in the slides. These are the only factors that can cause the tax levy to move. The equalization aid actually increased from last year, about $293,000, causing levy to decrease .7 percent. Chapter 228 decreased, which caused the levy to increase. You can see those first two almost offset each other. And I'm just going to skip down to the bottom two. The computer A decrease, it just has to do with the taxes on computer value in the district. And if it increases or decreases, it affects the taxes just slightly. The Recreation Department went up slightly, 38,000, .09 percent. But you notice that really the entire levy increase is for the revenue cap increase at $200 per member. $1,557,657, it's really right there. So it was tied to actually growth of resident students in our district.
Jen, just to put everything in perspective, can you tell us when you got your information from the state about the amounts you had to work with?
October 15.
Okay.
You don't get it. That's the inherent problem with this whole budget process is that the information doesn't come until way late. I tried to get that early, as you know, they would not even give us a temporary peek at what it could be.
Thank you.
That's just a graphical look at how the levy looks, including the Recreation Department, and that's without the Recreation Department. And I show them both ways simply because most school districts do not have a Recreation Department. That's usually handled by the city. So if you look again at this chart, it shows you a little bit more graphically of what the tax levy increase looks like. Again, it's without the Recreation Department. And if you average the last five years, including a negative there, you're at about a 4 percent average over the last five years. I wanted to show this because a lot of people, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but this is the nominal tax levy, which means it's just whatever the value of money was worth in the year that we taxed. And as you can see, I go back to 1988 on here, and obviously you can see that when state eights came in around '95, '96, that the nominal tax levy dropped, and it's way up to 43 now. But if we look at this in real dollars, which is really what you should do with your funds and when you're analyzing things, the $43 million that we're anticipating in '11, and I actually used the first, to figure this out, I used a CPIU with this as a Consumer Price Index, urban. And there's only nine months of data when I do this, and for 2010, I didn't increase nor decrease. I just left it the same, so it shows basically the actual levy in real dollars. But if you go back, 1988 through 1995 was higher than where we are now in real dollars. I mean, I know it's going up, but it was much higher in the past. In fact, it was about $10 million in real dollars going back to about '94, '95. So the value of money is taken into consideration when I did this graph. And if you go back to the '70s, the levy is even higher when it goes to West High School in Eisenhower. We need to go up some debt for that. Property taxes and state resources, I always like to show this because it shows you that gap at the end. Now, this year, actually, the property tax amount has gone down. You can see it's sloping downward a little bit. The state resources is also sloping downward, and that seems contradictory, but it's really not in this case simply because we have so much grant money this year to spend. And that's why that actual split is actually going apart, and the taxes are still coming down. It's because of grants. In fact, the total, when I show you the expenditures, the total increase in our budget is about 5 percent. And without the grants, it's not, I'm going to get to that, I'll go over that a little bit more. The equalized value tax rate, I don't take credit for this when it's going the other way because I don't believe in using the equalized value either way. Simply because when you use the equalized value here now, you have at the bottom, it says the equalized value decreases of a negative 2.2 percent, which means the state is saying that the value of all the property in Wauwatosa went down 2.2 percent. Well, if you put a rate on there that's going up, and the bottom denominator's going down, you're going to have the rate on an equalized value is going to go up. So, but that's the way we have to calculate this. The only purpose this might prove to be effective with is if you compare a one school district to another school district. That's it. Because the levy goes up a certain amount, the levy is applied on assessed basis for your taxes. This piece, I do it because if you want to compare it to other school districts, I can tell you that the 8.399 is still very, very low compared to most districts. Some are in the 10s, some even 11s. 8.399 is still very, very low. The equalized levy rate increase, 6.06 or 8.399 in total levy. For a $250,000 home in 2011, that is about $2,100. And that's simply taking a 250 times 8.399. It's not a hard calculation, it's a mil rate. And last year, taking the total equalized value rate, it was, a same property would have paid about $1,980. I don't think it's going to be that much. I think it's going to be about 4 percent higher than it was last year. So I think it's going to be more in the $80 range on a tax bill, not 120. Because again, and I don't have, unfortunately, at the city, they've had some personnel turnover, and I could not get the levy increase on an assessed basis. We will definitely work with them to put an insert into the tax bills that go out that explain it more thoroughly. But we contacted them on a number of occasions, and were not able to get the conversion at this time. But I know that the equalized value has decreased more than the assessed value has. And if that's the case, in theory, the levy that we show should actually be less on a tax bill because it's dropping at a higher rate. I don't know if people really are going to understand that or not.
And John, when you make that statement, are you talking about the percentage number will be less or the dollar number will be less?
What would the dollar amount be?
No, I mean, you said that something on the tax bill may appear to be, may be less.
Right.
And I'm asking...
What I'm saying is, I'm showing, because I have to show it this way. I mean, because it's the equalized value rate, it's $120, and that's going up 6 percent on an equalized rate. But when you get your tax bill, and this is where we had the discrepancy last year, where people were getting their bills, and it was higher than what I had said during the presentation.
What was higher? A percentage number was higher or a dollar number?
No, when they were saying, showing, because people really look at the percentage more than anything. The dollar amount is going to be figured based on the formulas they have. But what I'm saying is, based on everything that I know, based on how our equalized value has gone down, and assessed value, I don't think has gone down as much as the equalized value. That would mean that the rate that I'm showing is going to be higher than what the city is going to show on their tax bill. So I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be, but in absolute dollars, it's going to be in 80, I would say in a $250,000 home, about $80. That's what I would estimate at this point in time. This is showing the equalized value rate, basically about the same as it was in 0001, 002. Again, but it's on an equalized value basis. The total fund, the total expenditures here are $85,469,000. Now, I'm going to show you these basically under the revenue cap. And why I do that is because most of the other expenditures are all covered by our revenue, so they offset each other. These are the ones that are limited by how much revenue we receive under our revenue cap and by local revenues. Under the General Fund, we have an increase of $68,682,000. And that is, I'll get to it on the next page, I want to talk about that a little bit more. Special Ed Fund, just under $12 million. The non-referendum debt fund is $2.95 million, and that's because we're going to pay that debt off using the money that's freed up from the federal grant that used to save jobs at one of the schools. The Capital Expansion Fund is the money that we use to do our buildings. Now, you know... It's a project that cross over years, so there's carryover money in there because you didn't start some of the projects at the time. So we readjust the budget to use the fund balance that's in there from the previous year. The Recreation Department, total expenditures about $1.5 million. Food Service, $2 million, self-sustaining. And Fund 21, it's the donation fund, it's about $90,000. Now, the net general fund shows here, it's going up $1.95 million, and this is the net general fund. So I exclude the grants from here, 2.92 percent. Included in that number is $492,000 that we are using for funds towards a COPS grant that the police department received to increase security and other types of electronic equipment at our schools. There's also an offsetting revenue to that $500,000. So you're only looking at one side of the picture here. But if I took that $500,000 out of here, the increase in our net general fund would be about 2.19 percent. That would be about what the net general fund would be going up. If I move down here, Special Ed Fund going down about $409,000, and that's mainly because grants have been adjusted. Non-Referendum Debt Fund, that's Fund 38 because we're paying off the debt up $2.67 million. And the Capital Expansion Fund going down $34,900, and that's simply because there was a little less fund balance to carry over this year than last year. The total increase shows $4.177 million, or 5.14 percent. But that's greatly inflated. I would go more by what I said on the General Fund. It's really about 2.2 percent on the General Fund. 5.14 is mainly because of all the stimulus money we're receiving in grants. And I have some slides to show you that a little bit later here. The Recreation Department's going up $42,000, or 2.82 percent. Food Service Fund's going down about $90,000 or 4 percent, and Donation Fund basically stays the same. Here's a graphical look. You know, it's getting more difficult to show what really happens on a year-to-year basis with this because even last year, the 6.8 percent increase included stimulus grants. And this year, it has 5.14. They constantly adjust every single year, it almost gets impossible. The only explanation I had this year is when we paid off the unfunded pension liability, and then following, you had a huge decrease. Next year, my expectation would be if we don't get any more federal money, you will have a negative budget increase. And depending on what happens, right now, I would say it is, that's where people don't understand it. We could have a negative budget increase and the taxes still go up. And that's an anomaly that's hard to grasp at first, but it's just the way the formulas work. The breakdown here between salaries benefits, if salaries are about $44.7 million, benefits $22.7, that's almost 80 percent there. That's actually a little bit less than it normally is simply because we have grants that are skewing us a little bit this year. Purchase Services, $9 million, non-capital objects, $4 million. Capital Objects, $940,000, debt retirement, $2.9 million. Insurance, $528,000, and other objects, $341,000. Salaries going up 2.74 percent, benefits 5.85, which is rather modest. Purchase Services, 7.7. Non-capital Objects going down 28.16 percent. Capital Objects basically going up just slightly, 3.69. Debt Retirement's going up a huge, large amount just because of the payoff. Insurance went up 20 percent. That was mainly because of our modification on workers' compensation. And other objects are going down about 17 percent. Just a picture of this, salaries and benefits, 80 percent. Purchase Services, 10.57, non-capital, 4.91. Purchase services, ten point five seven, non-capital, four point nine one. Capital, one point one. And, uh, insurance debt and other objects is four point four seven. That's because of the debt payoff is in this number. And the seventy-eight point nine five is a little bit artificially low simply because a lot of the grant money is not used towards salaries and benefits. We look at these individually from nine-ten to ten-eleven for salaries, um, going up one point one nine four million or two point seven four percent. Um, all the labor contracts have been settled except with the, uh, Wisconsin, Wisconsin, Walertosa Educational Support Personnel. And one thing that I, in the last budget, just to understand, I, when we settled with the teachers, they, we passed the budget, which was right before that. And I had to estimate, um, the higher cost, the step advancement and the lane movements. And in all honesty, I underestimated that a little bit. It was higher than I anticipated and, um, just, just to, so you understand the difference in the budgets and the, the biggest profound effect that I found was when we hire somebody in a district now, it costs about seven or eight thousand more per teacher, um, than it was under the old contract. Because under the old contract, the starting salary was in the thirty-two thousand dollar range, now it's thirty-six five. But the farther they get over to the right and down, it's a little, even a little bit more pronounced than that. And I think personally, just because, um, teachers have been, um, at the same step in class, they are taking more, um, college credits and moving over to the right faster now than they have in the past. And that accounted for some of the change too. So in a normal year, I, maybe just for lane movement, I would see seventy-five, maybe a hundred thousand. And I think this year it was close to double that. I think it was closer to two hundred thousand just for lane movement alone. So there was definitely a shift in attitude amongst teachers to move that over and, uh, to move over higher on the contract. And I'm just making that point just because it was an observation. Um, salaries as a percentage of the total budget, fifty-two point three two. Again, this will actually come up again next year because the grants are in here and the grants are a, a large amount this year, but it's still gonna follow the downward trend of salaries. Um, benefits went up about one point two five million, five point eight five percent. Um, health insurance up about six point four percent, um, seven hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Our actual renewal was, um, I believe, seven percent. show around, um, and whatever the choice they're making. And the retirement has gone up, um, three hundred and eighty-three thousand or eight point four two percent. Rate increased from ten point seven to eleven point three. You know, the, the interesting about the WRS increase is two years ago, it actually went down. And why it went down, I don't know. Because, you know, now they're, they're, they're raising it back up to make up for when it went down. I, sometimes I don't understand that because they knew that the stock market was going, um, down at that point a couple of years ago, and yet they still decreased it. So that's just what's happening really with the benefits. Um, if you look at the benefits, um, as a percentage of the total budget, it's about twenty-six point six three and that up. And it's kinda staying rather flat, but it's still, obviously, if you go back in time, the salaries have gone down and the benefits have gone up. And that basically just reflects what the unions have protected in their negotiation. And I'm not being biased one way or another, but that's the reflection that you're seeing on that line. They protected the benefits over salary. The salary to benefit ratio, um, it used to be about two point eight eight, um, salary to benefits, and now it's about one point nine six. I go to purchase services, um, it went up about six hundred and forty-five thousand or seven point seven percent. And a lot of it has to do with the Fund Forty-One and Fund Ten in this case. But, um, in Fund Forty-One, uh, it went up four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. But there was carryover from the previous year of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. But then I had to subtract out the carryover that we had in the budget last year of four hundred and ninety-two. And then we actually increased the Fund Forty-One budget this year of eighty thousand. And then on top of that, and I just talked about this before, um, we have a cops grant from the city. The police department applied for it. It's a federal grant and it's, um, four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And what, what's happening on our books is we have actually, it, it's more of a capital project. So our piece of that, um, we have five hundred thousand dollars budgeted in the Fund Forty-One Capital Improvement Project. Then the matching piece, which is local dollars, is coming out of our budget, four hundred and ninety-two thousand. So we're gonna be paying the vendors the entire amount. Then what's gonna happen is the city is gonna submit the claims using our books, showing our documentation as the, as the, um, as the dollars spent for the matching, the local matching portion, which is in Fund Ten. They will apply for that. And then when they receive the money, they will forward that money to us, which will record as an expenditure. So what we're gonna show in Fund Ten is basically an expenditure of four hundred and ninety-two thousand and a revenue of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, netting out to zero. And then we also have basically five hundred thousand or just a little bit more in Fund Forty-One, um, for that. And Dr. Erdel can talk about a little bit of that, a little bit later, about what exactly they're gonna be doing with that money, um, in the schools. And under purchase services, open enrollment tuition, that, that would be, um, students leaving Walertosa, going elsewhere is, um, up a hundred and ninety- Non-capital objects, um, this is a lot of grant changes, but it's going down about one point six million dollars. Um, non-capital equipment is going down, um, five hundred and fifty-one thousand. And for the non-capital equipment, um, that was basically technology funds going down about three hundred thousand and, um, in the grant, in the ERA stimulus grants going down about a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Um, the textbook carryover is out of about seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and that's where we carried money over into this year to buy textbooks in a, in the student learning budget. Supply down a hundred and sixty-three thousand. It's actually up a hundred and fifty thousand in Fund Ten that supplies, believe it or not. And that a lot has to do with the, uh, schools carrying over their portion of the budget from last year. We allow them to carry it over. But in the, in a, in a Fund Twenty-Seven stimulus grant, supplies are down three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, and the software instructional is down a hundred and eighty thousand. And that is, I like that one. Technology is down about ninety-eight thousand. And again, in the grant, the, uh, in Fund Twenty-Seven, the ERA stimulus, um, is down a hundred thousand. So most of those changes in there, there's some district in there, the textbook is primarily district, but most of that, it just shifts in grants that were received last year falling off. That, that's really what that money represents. And it's hard to explain this when you start getting, cause the grants we received last year, not only, not only do they drop off or change, but not all of them were spent last year. So they're rebudgeted again this year. And on top of that, we got more money this year. So the grants do make understanding, it's a little bit, um, more complicated, but this is what's actually happening in the budget. The capital objects, um, up thirty-three thousand, three point six nine. And the debt, um, the reason it's up so much is we're gonna pay off the bond, the bonds on, um, uh, will be on February first. And I will come to the board with the resolution and final numbers on that at, um, probably in January. Other objects are up twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars or two point three nine percent. Um, on the revenue side, property taxes, and this is just looking at the, the school portion that's under the cap, up three point six seven percent. The state sources actually up point eight two, which that normally has been gone, going down or has gone down in the last several years. But you, you, look at the federal sources though, it's up twenty point eight, twenty-eight point seven one percent this year, but that's on top of money that we're carrying over too from last year because that, because of all the stimulus money the school district has been receiving. And it's one-time money. That's not money that's gonna be in the budget. Next year, it's going to drop, it's gonna be gone next year. Um, we have positions in the budget that are one-time positions that will need to be removed going into next year simply because we're, they're funded with one-time sources. And the local sources, um, are up about, uh, one million dollars, twelve point eight In a dollar amount, in a percentage, about in each fund, I shouldn't say fund here, it's the property tax, where you're getting the money from the property tax, the state source, the federal, or the local. Um, the federal sources, six point seven seven, which is high compared to what it's been in the past. State sources, thirty-one point one one. Property tax is fifty-one, which is coming down. Any other local sources, eleven point one three, which is very, very high compared to other districts. I went through the property taxes when I explained it with the levy earlier. The state sources are going up two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. And I wanna explain this a little bit so people understand better of why our equalization aid has gone up. Summer school in the, the aid calculation this year added, um, almost two hundred full-time equivalencies to our aid calculation. And remember, for summer school under the revenue cap, each FTE counts forty percent, but for aid, they're counted as one point oh. So to sum up the summer school, um, summer school generates about, um, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars under the revenue cap. In other words, we get to levy an extra eight hundred and thirty thousand. It costs between six hundred and fifty, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run summer school. So we have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that helps fund the regular school budget from there. The, the, in the past, it's been very close. Um, summer school costs versus expenditures are pretty, pretty much the same. We generate about an extra two point five to two point six million in aid from that extra two hundred FTE. So if you subtract the, the aid then from the, the revenue cap dollars that we spend, it, the net benefit for the taxpayers is about one point six or one point seven million. And that's why having the, the, the summer school program is, is very important from a fiscal standpoint. But you're also benefiting the students because they're getting opportunities to take during the summer that they may not have during the year. Hopefully, they're taking classes that enable them to have an extra study hall so they do better in school, um, during their regular school year, or they're, um, able to take an advanced placement class. So it's benefiting the school districts financially, it's benefiting the taxpayers tremendously on a taxation standpoint, and it's benefiting the, the, um, the students with the classes they can take. Okay? That's summer school. The open enrollment tuition, we get about seven point one million dollars from this. And that is about one thousand, one thousand non-resident students coming in. And I'm not saying this to the, but we do this strategically and, and Dr. Erdel and, um, Teri Krytowski, they, we go through this diligently and they place the students with our open seats and we only split classes when we need to split classes. So when we get that money, we're not really spending all that money on just those kids coming in. That seven point one million, just so everybody understands this clearly, has helped us, in fact, it is the reason we are able to keep all of our schools open. If we didn't have that program, our school district would look much different than it is right now, much different. And here's the other thing, the taxes would be the same. Your taxes would be the same for a lot less students. Okay? But what you would not need if you had, we couldn't afford with seven million dollars, us, you're talking three elementary schools, there are maybe a middle school included in there. I don't know if you would need two high schools anymore. You, you'd have a totally different structure here, a totally different structure. The other thing that has done is when we, when we get that money, um, from the other school districts, it's counted as a local revenue. So in the equalization aid formula, it's helped us to reduce or pull us out of negative tertiary aid. So it's also benefited the taxpayers. So the taxpayers, because of the way the formula's worked, it's counted as a, um, a not in a net share cost in the equalization aid formula. So I can't sum it up simpler than saying that. It has also helped taxpayers because it has pulled us out of negative aid, basically meaning that we get more aid by having that money come in the way it does. And then the third thing, um, that we had the issue on going into the last two years was the loss of membership counting at the detention center and the hospital. Originally, we were gonna lose, um, the ability to count all of the students and, um, I think it was a good team effort from a lot of people that went into this, but basically, um, what it comes down to is we actually get to count about half of what we used to count under the, under the scenario. It, it's kinda skewed. In the fall, we actually count more because of the way kids are, starting in September, in January, the count is less. But when you average them, it ends up being about a half of what we used to count. So those three factors combined, um, really have helped us get, um, more equalization aid in this district, more than we would, I mean, the summer school is a tremendous impact. Open enrollment has more impact than people will ever realize in the ability to keep all of our buildings open for everyone and all the residents. And if we didn't have that, we might have to incur transportation costs, which I would imagine would cost two and a half to three million for this district. So everything we've done here strategically has, has from financial payback and I believe a big benefit for the students also. Aid sources, um, Chapter Two Twenty-Eight is down two hundred and thirty-five thousand and we're down thirty-one FTE from oh eight nine to oh nine-ten membership. Um, and I believe, beginning next year, we're no longer able to take any new Two Twenty students because our minority population residents is over a certain percentage.
The overall percentage is over, it's, we're hitting thirty percent. We've become a sending district instead of receiving.
But at one point, we had about a thousand, so we're down pretty low on, on, on even where we stand now. The county program revenue, um, is up a hundred and nine thousand. And special education aid is up about sixty-five thousand. Federal sources, the federal grant changes this year over last year is up one point two million. But in total, and that, that's just from last year to this year, last year, there was a lot of money in- a lot of money in there. So this year, it's up another one point two seven one million. I just wanted to go through this just to understand what's in here. We got, um, the, the technology, the Tulsa School of the Trades in here, about two hundred and fourteen thousand. The federal job stimulus fund, um, that's a two point three five four million, that's the money we're going to use. Um, we, we are applying it to teachers at East High School and we're gonna use the Freedom Money and Fund Ten to, to feed the bonds, pay off the bonds. The IDEA ARA Fund Twenty-Seven Grant, um, is about nine hundred thousand and that's in Fund Twenty-Seven. Then there's our stimulus money, that's just the name in there. Uh, the early childhood ARA Fund Twenty-Seven, seventy thousand. And I, I don't know where they come up with these acronyms, but CEIS used to be EIS, early...
Intervent.
Yeah. She knows better. About forty-six thousand. Um, but if you look at that, um, you got almost three point six million in one-time money in the federal, in, uh, federal grants in the budget this year. And I'm not too sure, I'm hopefully, I'm hopeful that we spend it out this year because it is a lot of accounting, extra accounting work and a lot of extra filing and a lot of extra budget movements to move the people and the dollars around and planning with this money. Um, the local revenues are up one million dollars and this is a little bit, um, not normal, what happens from year to year. The prior year uncollected taxes, this, this one is, it's very odd and I, I talked about this in the, uh, in, in June, about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand and that's, I don't like to show this twice in the levy because we already levied for this money. We, we levied for this money, the city charges back this money during the year. So we levied for it last year and then for some reason, it had to do with, um, mis-categorization of some properties that were supposed to be exempt and they had them as taxable, so they, they shouldn't have charged taxes on, on those properties. And I think some of it had to do with, um, their categorization, categorization of, um, tax-exempt computer equipment that, I'm not too sure where that stands coming in next, for next year, but that is the highest it's ever been. Normally, even twenty-five thousand would be high there, it's kind of an ignored, um, item. The cop security grant via the police department, um, four hundred and ninety-two thousand. And I also talked about that as an expenditure, um, it's just, it's gonna be an in and an out on our books. The police department's gonna receive it from the federal government, they're gonna pass it out to us. Um, we'll probably record it in, I believe, as a donation on our books, um, from the police department and all of that money's gonna be used for upgrading, um, security in, in our school buildings. And then open enrollment tuition is up about four hundred and three thousand over last year. Um, in summary, the budget without the recreation department, about taxes are going about one point five million or three point six seven percent. With the rec department, just a little bit higher, one point five six million or about three point seven percent. And with the prior year chargebacks, and I have to include those on there unfortunately, um, the total increase is one point six eight seven or about, it's exactly four point zero zero percent. Now, that one hundred and thirty-five thousand, we have absolutely no control over that, none, zero. Um, that's just the way, the way this, this has all been structured and set up to work. Well, that's, that's what I have financially, actually from where we stood in the June budget, um, I think we're definitely in the lowest, um, quartile, if you wanna say it, in the state as far as tax levy increase. I know that, um, West Bend is going up about eight and a half. Now, I'm talking levy increases, I'm not talking tax rate equalized value to your actual levy increases. Um, I believe West Bend's going up about eight point three percent, Sheboygan's going up over nine percent. I think La Crosse is going up, um, over eight percent. Um, there were a lot of districts our size that were going up in the high single digits. We were definitely on the low end of this scale. And a lot of that had to do with the way we managed our finances for the aid. Um, the summer school plays a big role, the, the open enrollment, the way we manage open enrollment pays a big role, um, and try to stay out of the negative aid and we've just been hovering right on it, on that border. So from where we were in June till now, I think we've done a great job. I know that some people would like, um, a straight zero percent tax levy increase and why that could be a goal. Um, if, if that were the ultimate goal of a school district, you would have to, um, have all the union contracts come in at almost a zero percent increase for salary increases. That's the way the system works, um, that, or for cut, but you, when you, when you say cut, they have to be cuts that are, they can't be one-time things, they have to be permanent cuts, which generally means positions. And the kicker, even if you do that for one year, it doesn't mean it's not gonna go up higher the next year, number one. And number two, you could do everything in your power to say, I have a zero percent tax levy increase and set it in June and we're going up zero percent and all of a sudden the state comes back and says, you know what, we don't have as much aid for you, you have to tax more. So even though you did everything you could, the state came back and you still might have to increase taxes five percent. So it's not as simple as it may seem, um, because you have union contracts and I'm not criticizing that, I'm just pointing out the facts there. You have union contracts that are going up, you have state aid that has not been consistent nor have they kept it up at a level. Um, so those two factors right there automatically play into and cause our levy to go up. And we've been countering that with, um, the summer school and the open enrollment revenue to help us out of that. So with that, I don't know if you have any financial questions. I, I think the best way to do this, I'd like Dr. Erdl to just continue with the nine financial piece of this presentation and then if, maybe we can open up questions after everything is said and done, Paul.
The, um, I think all of the information that Mr. Mack just shared is, is good information, but it, what it really means, it doesn't mean a whole lot unless we're taking and investing... I think the strategic direction related to overall education of our kids is important and that's what I wanna kind of walk through a little bit, um, of some of the things that have changed certainly over the past three years and many of these are, are this past year. You look at, excuse me, sixty-seven million dollars. That's a lot of money and it pays for the people in the schools, for all of us. And I think we would, um, be remiss if we didn't invest significantly in all of us in our improvement. If we're satisfied with the way things are, we just keep going along and say, everybody's good enough. And that's really not our strategic direction. If you look at the goals of the district and where we're trying to go, I think there's some significant, significant drivers in what we're trying to accomplish. A lot of these things that I talk about are professional development. There are tools that, um, have been implemented or strategies that have been implemented to make us better and make learning, uh, more powerful for kids and have them move in the direction that we, we, so we can meet our goals. I guess the first one, and I don't have it on here, but it, I think it's quite obvious if we look out, um, in front of us right now, but we made, one of our shifts we made was Emily O'Connor and shifting for PBIS and having, having her full-time in that role of working with our PBIS program throughout the district. There's an example of something that's gonna, ultimately, it's about behavior, um, it's about students and how they act and we know very clearly that, uh, that has a direct relationship on learning in the schools. So there's a, there's one example of it. Uh, and then most of it, if not all of this, comes out of our long-range plan, which we went through and I know Laura's gonna talk a little bit about later, um, what we did this, the past couple of weeks with our long-range plan. One of the areas we've been spending money on, and I know previously, there was not a lot of money invested in consultants that would come in and work with us. If it was Eric Twiddell, um, Doug Beal, Helena Curtin for World, World Language, different outside experts that have come in and offered their expertise to help us and help us move in a positive direction. I think we've set a lot of different directions and we've looked for people that can help us move in the direction we're trying to go and I think there's some, if, if you just look at Eric Twiddell as a prime example, that has really helped us and I'll talk a little bit about that in, um, shortly. The plan and the explore, uh, we currently have the plan, I believe we'll be in our fourth, third, third year of the plan implementation and the explore will be implemented for all students in one grade level this year. That's approximately ten thousand dollars for each of those exams that we invest into assessing our students. The purpose of that is not just to test our kids, it's data that we can use to identify students that are not being successful, to push those that, um, are doing well that we maybe didn't identify. But that's also gonna lead us to one of our goals where we're having all of our students taking the ACT and pushing our ACT score up to twenty-six. Our building leadership team model for professional development, I think, has been probably one of the biggest changes that, that I've seen the most growth out of. And if you wanna call it the paying, paying it forward, um, significant investment in staff time and using people to come in and work with us, administrative time, but the concept of, of creating teacher leaders because we know that teachers are gonna grow better working with one another, not having somebody come in and a one-time drop and say, do this and all of a sudden it's gonna be implemented. And I think that's a process that we've, um, been working hard at for the past couple of years and it, it does take time. There is, um, significant expense associated with it, but we think that the learning and the growth that comes out of that far outweighs the, the cost with it. The PLC time, approved by the board a few years back, without it, we wouldn't have a majority of the things we're talking about. A lot of what we're trying to implement happens during that time and, again, we know that, we know the costs associated with it, although we haven't lost minutes throughout a school year, we do shorten a school day, um, create opportunities for students with the rec department, those are some positives, but, um, I think that time is critical. If we're gonna make the growth that we want to, we know professional learning communities are the way to do it, collaboration is the only way it's gonna happen and the only way to do that, it's create time. We can't just expect people to collaborate, um, without the time and it's been critical and it's critical for the future as well. Our map assessment has been something that, um, has taken off better than I expected when we first implemented it and taken off in meaning that it's, it's leading to changes and, and people are using the data to drive instructional decisions and using the data to assess students, see where they're at, know where they need to go. We spend seventy-five thousand dollars a year on the map assessment and as we continue to grow in learning how to use those results, that's gonna become more and more powerful. The expanded technology, um, I think the way we spend dollars, we, we've had significant changes in technology with a new network. Um, I think we're, we're very up to date with workstations and different types of technologies, but I think what we see right now is gonna be significantly different even in a couple of years, is we start looking at what we should be as a school district for technology and we should be the supplier of applications, the supplier of information and have people be able to access and Jamie has talked about the cloud vision and where people are coming in, um, accessing our system and, and our information that we have, whether it's applications and different data. I think most people walk around with either a cellphone that has, uh, internet access or iPads or Kindles and things like that. I also anticipate getting away from textbooks. I know there's a lot of districts across the country that are making that step and saying, we will not purchase another textbook and they're going to electronic and digital textbooks, but we're not quite there yet. That'll might be part of the 21st century movement out of one of our, uh, goals from the long-range plan. The cop security grant, that, it's interesting how that played out and I give a lot of credit on, to Doug Brown because Doug was instrumental in the planning of our security system across the district. And when the price tape came back, Jamie Price, Buildings and Grounds and Doug were working through the whole process and the price tape came back in the neighborhood of eight, nine hundred thousand dollars for what we really needed, um, for security systems, whether it was cameras, high-tech cameras throughout, throughout the district, card-access systems. And we started chipping away at it and saying, no, we can't do that. Um, I was very uncomfortable going anything over five hundred thousand dollars, which is what was budgeted. And Doug took it upon himself to apply for the cops grant and we actually got it. So we're able to do everything that's needed and even actually some additional upgrades of web access. For example, after some policy discussion, the police department will be able to have web access to all of our cameras, um, depending upon how that policy discussion goes, but administrators will have access to cameras. The card, card system for entry will better, better be able to monitor entry into the schools and have more access into the schools, although it'll be monitored. So that, um, is a piece that is taking place. And how does that relate to learning? I think if our kids feel more secure, they're gonna learn better. If our schools are more, are safer, um, it's gonna be a better learning environment. Project Lead the Way, roughly thirty thousand dollars is being expended this year in Project Lead the Way. We're implementing that into the sixth grade for next year and there's a lot of professional development that goes along with that in growing, uh, that program into the sixth grade. A data analyst position, when Mr. Mack was talking about... We look at all the data, we can be data-rich and not be able to use it and we need some, we need help with it and that's what we're doing with that position. And the warehousing system we currently have in Form, uh, which was a, what a fifty thousand dollar software system that was installed and this person will be able to help, help us access that, which will lead to more timely use of data, easier access to data for teachers and for principals. Math coaching, back again where, how do people learn best? Um, I think some of the research out there is pretty clear on a coaching model of learning and not, it's where somebody goes in to work in the classroom, work in small groups with teachers. We've invested thirty thousand dollars into math coaching this year. The literacy coaching model, we've invested forty thousand dollars this year into literacy coaching, um, and something that we're actually with our reading specialists, making that shift with all of them a bit and moving in that direction with all of our reading specialists, but targeting, um, targeting coach, the coaching model with that. Gifted and Talented change, we did take one of our district teacher leaders and she is now responsible for the Gifted and Talented program in the district. If you even step back a little bit further and the change in personnel of what we did with district teacher leaders was a significant change as well, going from learning coordinators, uh, which was two years ago and making that shift. Title-one positions, we lost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of title, yet we're able to shift some personnel back in using stimulus dollars for math interventions and we've maintained a few positions, uh, for math interventions as well. The reading specialist, I talked a little bit about that. We also made a shift in not hiring a reading specialist and that's where the literacy coaching model is, money is shifted toward that and hiring a, hiring an aide, literacy aide that is working in one of the schools as well. I think Mr. Mack touched on summer school. For me, um, we're not driving around in Model Ts anymore, yet we maintain this, our schedule that goes a hundred and eighty days and that's all we get. And I think summer school is critical. And where we're at is, it's good, but it's certainly not where we need to be. Summer school needs to be a learning opportunity for every one of our students in our district and somehow we need to get to the point where all of our students are accessing summer school, um, accessing high-level courses, accessing growth if we want our students to meet those goals that we're targeting. I don't think we can do it without some, uh, quality summer school work and maybe at some point in my career, I'll see a change in the school calendar and we'll be able to do something better based, not based on the agricultural model, so. Blackboard is just one example of something that was introduced into the district, which is an online learning tool and we increased our professional development budget on Blackboard. I'm not sure of the total number of teachers that have gone through that training since the beginning of this school year, but it was a, a large number and a large number of teachers are using it in some way, shape or form. If we're looking at 21st century and how we teach and more so how kids learn... If we're looking at 21st century and how we teach, and more so how kids learn, it's going to look a lot different than, than everything in bricks and mortar. And if we can look at hybrid classes, and I think some of our teachers are doing that, that's a shift we need to make, and I think it's, it's a long time coming, and we're moving in that direction. Currently, our social studies curriculum is under review, and we're budgeting between $150,000 and $175,000 for new materials, and whether that's textbooks or whatever materials it'll be to support the new curriculum as we go through that. Social studies is one of the areas that, in particular at the elementary level, tends to get left behind a little bit, and I think we're going to find some good ways to make sure our social studies curriculum is delivered in a meaningful and, and good way. The Montessori school, there's money targeted, if, if approved, to renovate this building, and I think also creates more opportunities and choices for parents and students in our district, and hopefully by next fall that we have that open, and we're providing that type of learning environment for families and for students in our school district. A revised teacher evaluation model, which is something that came out of the last negotiations, and currently that's in a pilot process, but if we look at the expenditure, $67 million is for all the people. A large portion of that is our teachers. If we're not developing, maintaining the best teachers, we're doing a disservice to our students and to our, to our community. And I think the, the evaluation model not only helps to grow and maintain our best teachers, but also make sure that those that are not performing well are maybe making a different, different choice and moving on. So we have a, it was a great group effort that has developed that. Like I said, it's in the pilot stage right now, and hopefully that turns into something that we're able to implement district-wide next year. And another piece, and it really comes out of our long range plan, is communication. We've continued to make our website better, and I think we'll be going through a, another update of our website shortly. The Alert Now system has helped improve communication with, which I think is important. And, and many other efforts with communication. We're going through a, a process to look at all of our communications and try to figure out and determine the best way to communicate. I, I know I've mentioned over and over that communication is something that we never get completely right, but we'll continue to keep working to improve, and there's always expenditures that go along with that. For example, Alert Now is in the neighborhood of $17,000 a year for that system, which allows us email access, direct email access to parents as well as phone access, so. Those are just a few of the budget pieces that I think have, certainly if I look back three years ago, these weren't there, a majority of them were not there. And I think it's important to show that we're trying to improve as a school district, that we're taking the budget and it's being used wisely, and it's being used for, for one reason, and that's to grow our students and to make learning stronger, to make learning better for our kids. And there's a whole host of ways to get there, but I think most importantly, it's growing our staff and getting our staff to become better, and that's where a significant portion of our budget goes, so.
Board members, questions? Mrs. Weber.
For those in the public who may not know Doug Brown, would you mind telling who Doug Brown is and what his title is?
He is our School Resource Officer at West High School.
He started out, he was the first resource officer that was approved for the district, and he, we now have three that serve our secondary schools. A just, I think, a wonderful investment that we made, and just your speaking of him tonight summarizes the important role he is. Then I'd like to speak to John. I'd like to thank you for your wonderful presentation and the way in which you have presented this and further the management of our school district funds. I truly believe we are where we are because of your wise investment overview of the budget, and I would just ask you to continue the job you are doing.
Mrs. Randall.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl, for highlighting all of the initiatives that, that you have been leading. I think we're very fortunate in Mr. Mack and Dr. Erdl. And just two things specifically, the summer school that you talked about, and I have to give some credit on the board here to Mr. Meyer. I remember a couple of years ago when, when he started talking about this in conjunction with Dr. Erdl, and, and that has really taken off. So the other piece I want to mention briefly is, we talk about the 80% in salaries and benefits, and we talk about that we have increased our starting teacher salary. And I, I want to remind people, it's been a while since we talked about this, but the board had goals that you assisted us in reaching, and that was, one of them was to make our salaries more competitive, so that we could attract and retain the best teachers, which, which we are doing. So that starting teacher that you're talking about, that we're paying more, we also, in that negotiation, got some concessions on post-retirement benefits for that new teacher that we don't see tonight, but are significant, and, and that was another part of our goal in that negotiation. So I think it's important to note that it was a very, I think it was a responsible and it was a very positive negotiation session and outcome, and thank you too to Mr. Chanon. But again, maybe you can talk a little bit about the long-term savings that come out of that negotiation as well as the added, you know, expenditures today, so.
Well, they, yeah, right, the post-retirement benefit, we did get a concession on that. And when we do the, I have to do the OPEB study, other post-employment benefits, every other year, and I have to do another one this year, and this will be the first year that, that change will be incorporated. And in theory, as we move forward, I don't want to get too technical here, but it's going to lower our unfunded post-employment liability. In addition to that, though, we, we've had, we've been lucky in our contract that we have an absolute number of people that can go out per year. So on a cash basis, once we hit our maximum, we can't be hurt as other districts have. There's districts of our size that are paying $8 million a year to go out in OPEB benefits, and ours is 1.7, 1.8 million dollars per year. But that will show up, and the farther we go on through time, instead of that, that curve eventually will start coming down, and that will benefit future generations as we move on through time.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to point out, I, I really believe this was a respectful, responsible negotiation, and I, I think Dr. Erdl touched a little bit on the other things we've been able to do with our teachers as far as professional development and to recognize what they bring to the district.
Mrs. Miffel.
John, I have a couple clarifying questions. The security grant, just so that I understand what that is. It's that $492,000, which is the grant portion. And then, is it my understanding we budgeted $500,000 in addition to that?
We, right, we had to have a matching local portion. It's really, it's really a 50% match, it's not 100% match. So we had a, we had to spend about $492,000. We happen to have in Fund 41, a half a million dollars for, pegged for that project. $492,000, it could have been done in two ways. I actually talked to the business manager in West Alice who did this last year, and what they did was, instead of having the police department front the money for the grant piece, we're doing it as the school district, but then when they receive the money, the city receives the money, they would just forward it to us. So that ma, the matching piece would be a net zero for us. But we do have to spend the $492,000 in order to qualify to get the money from the federal, it's actually from the U.S. Department of Justice, I believe, to get that money, the $492,000, so.
Okay, I understand. So I just, I wasn't sure if it was 942.
No, well, we're gonna, we're gonna end up spending close to a million dollars, or neither, whatever, close to a million dollars on a project, but.
But we'll get the $492.
But in our books, it's really $492,000 that we have to spend, to, to get the extra $492,000 from the Department of Justice.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. My second question is on the Chapter 220. I understood that we're at our minority cap, correct, for the 11, 12 school year, so does that mean a policy change coming that we would then not accept?
Part of our recommendation would be to recommend not ta, not accepting any, and we'll get the language from the DPI if it's different than that.
The current siblings.
Right.
The J.K.'s, and, okay. And, and then finally, I just want to clarify, what is your expected increase in the tax levy by percent as compared to what we talked about in June at the 9.94? Obviously, that's much reduced. I'm, I'm thinking it's around 6%.
Well, with the uncollected, it's going to be four. And remember, at the time that I did that, membership at the county was unclear, and we lost that. You know, we could have seen probably closely at least the 8% range, so that, that piece got cleared up, and that helped us a great deal. Plus, our summer school membership went up, and the open enrollment actually helped us too, pull us out of the negative aid. So it, it could have been a lot worse, it honestly could have. And I don't want to, I, I wouldn't want to say 4%, and then I would come in here at nine, you know, I ju, I didn't want to do that, because I want it to be on the high end of, of the possibility of where it could have gone, so.
3.7.
When I was horrified in June, when I said, can you please work a little bit harder? You actually did work a little bit harder, and.
There, there are some people.
And some things went our way, so.
Well, and that, and that, it goes back to, and see, that's when I talk about the bond deficits too. It's very important that you understand how that's going to affect the U and A formula, because we need to do that bond deficit in conjunction with spending that other money in the same fiscal year, otherwise we would lose about $600,080 if you flip-flop the years. So you have to time those things so they help you with getting utilization aid and protecting the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, no doubt, I, you know, I can support this budget, even though I, I couldn't from the get-go in June, but I think we have, Dr. Erdl's presentation really talking with the constituents and saying, this is what we are doing for the kids of Wauwatosha that are in our care, and, and financially, definitely a conservative district due to all the hard work of the administrative team. So thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
It's been very easy to be a board member in Wauwatosha relative to other districts. First piece of advice I remember hearing was from Mrs. Weber to listen, and we have John Mack to listen to. So the whole idea of the summer school and the financial benefits, way at the beginning of my time on the board, I, I'd listened to what John Mack said, and John Mack told us that it was a good financial thing for the district. And the board chose to find educational opportunities in something that was a good financial opportunity for the district. And the overlap of those two things is what puts us where we are, is that we listen to what John has to say, and we find our opportunities in those areas that are of, of financial benefit to us. I continuously and regularly trust John. I trusted what he had to say in June, and I trust what he has to say now. Some things that kind of are onset is that these wise financial decisions that John recommends are, are very conservative in nature. He just doesn't, you know, hit on the risky things. He doesn't take risks with the taxpayers' money and with our kids. You know, we hear locally, there's a number of school districts who made some very risky financial investment decisions, and they're not in good shape. And now because of that, and Wauwatosha was offered those financial deals, and John turned them away, and it was never brought to the board because there was too much risk in it. And so, thank you, John, for, for that. And then I appreciate the, the, Dr. Erdl's statements of the budget items that we're supporting, because, you know, we have a steady amount of money. We can't really increase by much or decrease by much. You know, we kind of have a little bit more money every year, but basically, the, you know, we, we make wise decisions so we don't run out of money, but it's pretty much a fixed amount within certain limits, and therefore it comes down to what do we leave in and what do we take out? And to do something new, to do social studies curriculum, to do any of these things on these lists, you know, the Project Lead the Way, the language program next year, it comes down to policy choices, educational policy choices, and that's where the board has the time to do that, because we don't have to be worrying about the, the financial choices, because John has that covered for us. So it's nice to see these policy choices. And it'd be curious to talk about what we decided not to do, but that's for a longer meeting at another time. But these definitely are choices, to do things and, and to not do other things. And as we want to expand and grow into other areas over the next couple of years, we may need to decide to stop doing something, because something that is part of our major goals is, is more important. So time will tell. So thank you, John, and thank you, Dr. Erdl.
Other questions or comments from the board? If not, before we have our vote, I would like to give the opportunity of our community comment with respect to our business services action item. Anyone like to offer community comment, please step forward to the center microphone. Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the role with respect to approval of our
Mr. Ray.
Yes. We then move on to our next action item, human services. Mrs. Weber.
It is recommended that the school board approve a revision to action taken on August 23rd, 2010, and modify a total package increase from 3% to 3.55% for the non-represented employee group for the 2010, 2011 school year, effective July 1, 2010, an ISO move. Second?
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Board questions or discussion?
Mr. Ray, if I could just comment.
You may.
On this real quickly. The reason this is back is, when we initially proposed a 3%, we've had this growing group of non-represented employees, and the, it's become, for lack of a better term, a very eclectic group, from people ranging from some of our lowest-paid employees to salaried employees over $100,000. So the challenge is to try to figure out how we can give adequate increases and, to the employees and, and be able to, to do it within this one group. Well, clearly, we can't do it within one group anymore, and what we're working on for next year is having two different groups of non-represented employees and trying to structure it that way. So in the future, when we come back, it'll be with, at a minimum, two different groups when we bring it back.
Mrs. Miffel.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. I think that's important, and I appreciate you bringing this to the board. I have considered this very thoughtfully, and I would like to stick with the earlier board ruling of 3% for two reasons. The first is, it is, we are able to give with that 3% package increases to all the employees in this group. I am very mindful of the economic impact, and it's also my understanding that the for supporting the three percent that the board voted on earlier.
Mrs. Randall?
Uh, Dr. Erdl, how many employees are we talking about?
Mr. Jayman?
Uh...
Thirty-five?
No, I don't think even that many.
Approximately thirty-five.
Is it even that many?
It's a, it's an approximate number, part, part of the difficulty, however, with the wide range of salaries, I mean, it's kind of, of, of piggybacking, and when you're talking about a percent dollar amount, um, a, a very small percentage move on a, a salary exempt employee is gonna, is going to, um, use up a significant portion of that three percent, uh, which would be allocated to an hourly basis. So, especially with a small number, around thirty-five, if she sounds about right, um, I apologize for not...
That's okay, I just found it an approximate.
But, uh, it, it's gonna dramatically affect the wages of, of the non-professional hourly staff.
And, um, does anybody have the difference between the three point oh and the three point five-five? I know you gave it an approximate at the last meeting, and I wanna say sixteen thousand?
No, it's between five thousand and fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so the difference between the initial and this one is five thousand fifty-five hundred?
That's correct.
And I, I, and I will support this, um, having spent time on, on a personnel committee of the board a few years ago and tackling exactly this, um, phenomenon of having these people who are not represented but, um, carry out very different functions and, um, wide range in salaries, I understand the challenge in, um, coming up with a recommendation, so, um, I understand that, um, Dr. Erdl has, has, uh, thoughtfully recommended a change in the initial recommendation, so I do support that.
Other questions? Mr. Meyer?
I, I wish to support this as well. Um, the reason being that, um, you know, the performance of these individuals was reviewed with the board in executive session, as is appropriate under the law, um, and the particular mix of people here includes people who staff positions in areas where, as we just discussed in the budget, there's things we are choosing to emphasize and enhance and grow, and there's things that we are choosing to de-emphasize or leave out, the question of what to leave in, what to leave, take out. Um, particular roles in this group of people are in areas that we're choosing to add to, that they're of strategic importance to our educational plans, and therefore, it's appropriate, uh, and so I support this.
Mr. Bro?
Um, I've thought about this a lot too, and I've decided not to support this. I value the work that these employees do, and they're some of the very best employees that we have, but everything that everyone said about this group existed at the time that this recommend, initial recommendation was made for three percent, so I think it's, uh, bad practice for the board to go back and redo these kind of employment agreements, so while I appreciate the people and the work that they do, and it's not a huge dollar amount, I think it's important that we do the work the right way the first time and that we should stick with the agreement that we already have.
Other questions or comments? Not, uh, community comment with respect to our human services action item? If there is none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the role on our human services action item, please?
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
No.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes. So, with that, uh, that motion passes, we then continue on with our reports to the board section of our agenda for this evening, and we start with student services, I see Ms. Krykowski is moving to the, uh, presentation table. Um, before we begin, let me just give a general reminder, Ms. Krykowski, if you can help me as the presentation is going on, um, we have been told, given the, uh, new microphone system that we're using, uh, for our board meetings, that it's helpful if everyone who's speaking during the presentation makes sure that they have a microphone in front of them or in their hand, and they're speaking directly into the microphone, because if you don't do that, then the audio recording is not of real high quality and is real difficult to hear when it's played back, so if everyone could just keep that in mind as we're proceeding, that would be very helpful, and that, take it away.
Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Ray. Um, I'm going to turn it over right away to Emily O'Connor, she is our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports External Coach, she's gonna give a presentation, um, sharing an overview of what PBIS is, and, um, we have some staff from across the district that are involved in this initiative in their building as well, that are gonna participate in the, uh, presentation as well, so I will step away from my microphone so that those staff members can come up and use this microphone.
Great, thank you very much. Um, as Therese pointed out, I am, um, the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports External Coach for the Wauwatosah School District. Um, as Dr. Erdl pointed out earlier in his presentation, um, we know that the coaching model is incredibly effective in, um, changing our practice, practices as, um, school staff working with students, and therefore, um, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports uses that same model. Um, as the external coach, it's my responsibility and, um, my, my job to kind of provide some technical assistance to schools, provide a, a sounding board, and, um, just an additional resource, an additional, um, uh, voice in the conversation to guide our practice. So, I'm very excited for the opportunity, thank you very much, and we have several people from schools to help kind of discuss what PBIS is, and, um, just to begin, I'd like to start off with a very basic overview of what Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports is. PBIS is a broad range of proactive systemic and individualized strategies for achieving important, important social and academic outcomes. Um, PBIS helps to frame our practice in regards to student behavior so that we're providing and maximizing the environment to be safe and effective for all of our students and all of our staff. Um, PBIS seeks to be much more proactive and preventative than we have been in the past with our practices in regards to behavior, and so, it's, um, a three to five-year process to kind of really develop those practices, capitalize on what we're doing very well, um, build on small successes, and, um, slowly change how we've been, um, addressing and intervening and being preventative with student behavior. Uh, very quickly, PBIS got its starts in nineteen ninety-four, if you do any research on the internet or look around, uh, across the country, PBIS has had incredible success in several states, including Maryland, Illinois, Florida, they have, um, some phenomenal practices going on with PBIS, but it actually got its start in Oregon. Um, as you see here on the PowerPoint, Fernridge Middle School in Eugene, Oregon, had a little bit of a discipline problem. Um, they had eight hundred and eighty students in their student population, and in just one calendar year, one school year, they had over fifty-one hundred office discipline referrals. Um, so, they were kind of, you know, in need and of changing some practices and looking at what was going on, because it wasn't so much that the students had challenging behavior, they also wanted to look at their environment and what they were providing for the students. So, it, it provided this incredible think tank for, um, the researchers, Rob Horner, George Shigai, and Ann Todd, three of the major leading researchers on PBIS. Um, they came in and they were able to interview school staff, look at their structures, look at their systems of support, and really hone in on what, um, what good practices in addressing student behavior. Um, I had the opportunity to hear Rob Horner speak this past summer, and he, um, is an incredibly engaging guy, he's a former school teacher, high school teacher, um, he said, you know, the number one priority of PBIS is to, uh, provide a positive school culture for students and for staff, um, and you'll see that later, and the schools will certainly be highlighting some of these practices, but I think that's so important, that we oftentimes talk about what a positive school culture is, and we get really excited about it, and we obviously want this for our students, but what, what these three researchers actually did was put their fingers on some very key markers that we can do and we can provide in our schools. Um, so it's not this nebulous, um, concept anymore, it's something that we can actually... Um, PBIS uses the Response to Intervention Model, or the RTI Model, that you may have heard some about or be familiar with. Um, again, PBIS really strives at this bottom green level, um, it's called the tier one level of support, really strives to be proactive and preventative in our approach. Um, we wanna look at the school and, um, as an, as a whole environment, not just individual students, we wanna look at all of our settings and all of our staff and all of the practices that we're putting into place. Um, the next phase of not only, um, implementation of PBIS, but the training that needs to, um, that occurs with staff and, um, schools, is that tier two, or as you see up on the PowerPoint, um, a little bit of yellow, that fifteen percent, um, is, that's the tier two level of interventions, that, you know, if that tier one level of preventative, um, work is not being, is not successful for a student, and it, it might not be successful for a hundred percent of our students, but we hope and we strive for it to be successful for at least eighty percent of our students, um, we can use some tier two level interventions for specialized groups, um, and for students who have a little bit more of elevated at-risk behavior. Um, and then, the third process or the third tier at that top yellow triangle, um, for three to five percent of our students, we wanna look at those individual behavior plans, which I think has been, um, somewhat of a, it's, you know, a traditional practice that we, you know, students having trouble, we wanna come up with some individualized strategies to help that student, um, but maybe we haven't, maybe we haven't looked at it from a global perspective, um, prior to. Um, so, um, it kind of moves up those levels of support, and as we move through PBIS and provide it for our students, we are layering those systems of support, because as you see, even a student who would be receiving tier three interventions at the very top of the triangle, they still are receiving secondary or that tier one green, green level of interventions. So, this year, uh, we have eight schools in our district that have already begun tier one implementation of PBIS, we are super excited, and they'll be, they'll each be highlighting some different aspects of it, but the core principle of, um, tier one PBIS implementation is what you see here. Um, first, we ask that school teams and school staff, um, come up with three to five school-wide expectations. These expectations are very similar to values, they are very similar to what we would hope, um, any student in the Wauwatosah School District would look like. More commonly, um, you'll hear a lot of schools talk about their three expectations as responsible, respectful, and safe, or responsible, respectful, and engaged. Um, so, uh, I don't know if this one's working. So, then the second one, the second part of tier one implementation is to actually teach and mod, or teach and pre-correct this behavior with our students, from K, from kindergarten all through, um, senior year of high school, that we're gonna kind of throw out all of our assumptions, um, we're not going to assume anymore that, that children know how to be respectful, responsible, and safe in the hallway, we're actually going to teach them how to do this and, and what it looks like. Um, we are going to model as school staff, or sometimes at the high schools, maybe have, um, some students model, um, Wauwatosah West came up with a really great video, and they had a few of their students, um, demonstrating what, you know, inappropriate behavior would be, and then, what the appropriate behavior would be, and they showed it to all their students, to model and to practice, and to show, this is what we hope, and this is what we are looking for in all of our students. Um, the next part of tier one implementation is to also then acknowledge and reinforce in students, um, that behavior that we wanna see. Uh, quite frankly, often, um, who, you know, the students that get the majority of our attention are students who have some, um, more elevated concerning at-risk behaviors, and while they certainly need that attention, and we certainly wanna provide those interventions, um, we also want to acknowledge when that student or when all students are doing what we expect them to do and what we, um, have already defined and taught them to do. So, we're going to acknowledge them, and different schools have come up with lots of different acknowledgement systems to do that, um, quite effectively. When students have not met those, um, or, you know, are, are not quite following those expectations, again, we're gonna throw out our assumptions, we're gonna throw out the assumption that maybe they learned it the first time, and we're going to reteach them, we're going to show them again, and we're going to model it again, and we're going to review it again with them. Um, and then, if it still is not successful, that's when we can look at those tier two interventions, but right now, in, in those eight schools that are implementing PBIS, we're really trying to firm up and hone in on these practices right here. Um, another key piece, uh, a really important key piece of PBIS is, um, the use of data. Uh, we want to make our decisions based on student behavior and based on our, you know, and within our school environment, we wanna make those decisions based off of data, not based on how frustrated we are, or, you know, how our tolerance level might be that day. We really wanna look at, um, data in a lot of different forms, um, and we've got many different tools to do that, um, and we wanna make sure that we're reviewing data on a monthly basis so that we, it's always fresh in our minds, it's always the heart of our conversations, and this is how we are, um, you know, maybe changing some of our practices or enhancing some of our practices based on that data. So, this is kind of the model that schools are, are following right now in their implementation, and I'm gonna invite them, um, to come up and introduce themselves and to share what they're doing at their schools.
So, if, Wauwatosah East, we're coming up.
I'm already ready. Hi there, I am Erin Gould, and I teach social studies at Wauwatosah East, and these are my partners in crime. Um, and I'm talking about the rate of respect freshman orientation. So, in two thousand and seven, we were actually awarded an EFW grant and rolled out a freshman orientation that was called Mission Two Thousand and Eleven, Nothing is Impossible. Our orientation included team-building activities for the class of two thousand and eleven on the first day of school. The orientation went well, but something was missing. We needed something bigger to create a positive learning environment from the first day of school and carry it on the whole year through. We found this something in spring, two thousand and ten, when PBIS was introduced at East. Together, the staff created an expectation matrix entitled Rate of Respect, Respecting Self, Others, and Environment. We use this matrix as our springboard for the rate of respect freshman orientation for the class of two thousand and fourteen. On September first, two thousand and ten, the freshman class of two thousand and fourteen arrived at East looking excited and just a little nervous. They were welcomed by the Tose East drum line and our administrators, who began the process of introducing rate of respect to the fresh-faced sweaty students. The morning consisted of team-building activities and a tour of the building that reinforced our rate of respect matrix expectations, a snack, of course, was provided. Each freshman was given a white shirt with a red, red rate of respect phrase emblazoned across the front. When the upperclassmen returned that afternoon, they were introduced to rate of respect their classroom expectations. Post-orientation, we surveyed both the staff and the freshmen about their experience, asking them to identify ways we can improve in, in the activities they enjoyed. Besides the fact that some freshmen didn't want us to do activities that made them sweaty, I believe that the implementation of PBS within our school has made a series of successful first steps in work.
Hi, so, just to give you a little bit of the process, we were allowed to go to a PBIS, um, tier one training of, um, a, a small number of staff last year. We went, became very excited, and decided to bring it back to our staff at a staff meeting. What we did is we, um, dug through Power School and tried to find any behavioral data we could figure out, and we looked at some certain pieces of data to try to have something to bring to the staff, and we were able to bring some, uh, in, interesting data about our school and about the behavior and attendance and tardies and, um, that type of thing, when does it happen, how often does it happen, which month does it happen, what hour, what part of the building, all of these types of things that we can pull from Power School, and what, um, what is the characteristic of a student who's most likely to be in, um, in, end up with a, a incident report to the office? And so, we then presented that to the staff, um, they were very interested in what we brought, um, in particular, a, a slide about our first-hour tardies, and, um, then we provided, um, part of PBIS is that you need eighty percent staff support, and so, um, we presented this, and then we offered a secret ballot that were business cards to see, um, what staff... to see what staff were interested. We had all but two members of the school staff who were interested in participating in this after that. We also sent out a staff engagement, I mean, a self-assessment for staff. We included cafeteria line workers, custodial staff, the administrative assistants, every adult in the building, because they are all part of the culture, and got some feedback from them. We also started a senior Rate of Respect group, so that we have an advisory group from the leaders of the school to get feedback from that. We've had, we've sent out another vote for staff. They are still completely on board and are very excited about it. I think the culture of our school is improving. It was good already, but I think that it's pretty, it's pretty fun to watch. And we decided to focus on one behavior this year to see if we can make an impact and to follow it over time. And we chose first, first-hour unexcused tardies. So...
I am Jean Hoffman, Dean of Students and Challenge Seminar Teacher at East. Okay, so, we started to look at first-hour tardies, and we decided this was really a problem. And when we were focusing on our matrix, we decided, you know, first-hour tardies really impact self. We're missing instructional time and others. Every time a student walks into a classroom late, it's a disruption to the class. So, we looked at the problem. We talked about our expectations. As a staff, we decided, okay, we really need to be consistent across the board. And because we had our buy-in from our staff, everybody said, okay, yes, we can, we can do this. We can live with this. We will not let students into class without a pass first hour. They have to go to the office. And then, every student who came to the office for, and we're still doing this, every student that comes to the office for a pass gets, you know, you know, why you're late. We talk to them, personal connection. Tell them the consequences. The consequences increase with each next incident. And then, we're very consistent in making sure that they take care of those consequences. What we found so far, when we looked at the data last year, between last year's September... 7%. And we're hoping that trend continues. So, we're, you know, we'll continue to monitor. We'll continue to, to offer up the consequences. We get families involved. You know, if you get to a certain number, we're calling home. We're saying, what can we do? What do we need to do? And when kids have to serve detentions, we're talking to them, telling them about the importance of being in class on time. And I think it's working.
All right.
Good evening. I'm David Keach, a member of the Special Ed Department at West High School. And the thing about PBS that we're very excited about is it's a platform that we're using to really try to build a more positive school culture. In the, in the past, we feel like we've fallen into kind of a negative cycle of, in terms of addressing student behavior, where we confront, and then refer, and then punish, and realistically, very often, see that same behavior again in the future. And so, because our referral data was showing us that the kind of punishment-only approach really wasn't, wasn't being effective. It wasn't creating any kind of positive connections with student and staff. What we're, again, we're excited that PBIS offers us is an approach to be a lot more proactive, a lot more positive when we're talking to students, when we're, we're looking at their behavior and the expectations. So, one of the first things we did was we revised our student behavioral expectations. We changed it from a long list of "don'ts" to a pretty concentrated, focused list of positively stated expectations. So, our Trojan Way. And they're, they're all oriented around three themes of respect, responsibility, and connecting and engaging in school. And like Tosa East, we, we started off the year with our orientation. Emily mentioned our, our video that students produced, which was a real hit with the students and the staff. So, that laid the groundwork. We let them know kind of what was coming up. And not just the students, for the staff as well. And one of the keys is to have consistent expectations from the staff, so that the students know consistently what's expected of them. And so, moving on from there, during the year, we've, we've started to now actively explain and teach the behaviors that we expect. We're using our Friday homerooms to do that, to reinforce different elements of the Trojan Way. And then, moving beyond that, again, to make it something where we try to acknowledge and reward positive behavior rather than just focus on the negative. We've implemented our Trojan Ticket system, where students get a, basically, a raffle ticket for doing the right thing, for showing the behavior that, that we're hoping to see. And then, every week, we have a drawing, and it's announced who the winners are. And the teacher who gives the ticket out also gets a prize. That encourages us to remember to reward the right, the right thing. But, but the homeroom provides us a greater opportunity to interact on a more individual, personal level with the students. We've really pushed engagement just all day, especially during passing times, having staff out. Is when they're doing the right thing. Make those, hopefully, kind of pre-corrections before things get, get out of hand. All building up towards, again, a more positive rapport, where interactions, when a student sees a staff coming up to talk to them, hopefully, they don't automatically assume that they're in trouble, that it could be, you know, hopefully, a good thing. So, I think if you walk through, through West today, through the halls, through the classrooms, I think you would see a real improvement. We're very pleased with the progress so far.
I'm Evan Weishon. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Longpil Middle School and the internal coach for Longpil. And just like the high schools, we have established our three expectations of respect yourself, respect others, and respect the environment. And I think it's awesome that East has the same kind of themes, because a majority of our students at Longpil do then go on to attend East. So, what we worked on really this year is we received the same training. We've established these, and we're building a common language in the building. Building has over 800 kids. You have so many staff members. Everyone has different. As long as we work with those umbrellas and establish that common language this year, things are going to improve in the building with consistency. It's clear. The kids understand what's going on. To do that, we created a video. I roped in my sixth graders last year, and we taught the expectations that were established. We used humor. It was, you know, clearly stated. And I think it started off our year fabulously compared to other years, you know. They would much rather see me goof around in a video doing the wrong thing than the principals telling them, don't do this, don't do that. So, it's a much more positive approach. And sixth graders like to lead the way. So does the sixth-grade staff. So, what we've done is we've kind of taken something that's been positive in the building is sixth-grade lunch duty. I've done it for all my years in the building, and it's not your favorite experience every day, but it has been this year for me. So, we modeled the expectations of what did we want the cafeteria to look like? What did, what do we want the students to do? What was the staff going to do? How was that going to work? So, we modeled it. We showed it. Then, we reinforced it. We just, with simple words. Reinforcement doesn't have to be a physical thing. It can be, thank you for doing that. Or, great job. Keep up that good work. Or, could you help us out? So, we really did that. We then brought in a reinforcement of, we gave them extra recess, which is always a good plus. Low cost, no cost. The sixth-grade teachers are completely on board. The cafeteria in the sixth grade has never been so clean. You can walk in there, and there's nothing on the floor. The tables are washed. The kids are behaving well. They're respecting us, everyone. The lunch staff has been very supportive in working with us, coming together, saying, hey, you guys are doing a great job here. I'm seeing this and all that. And I am looking forward to the rest of lunch duty this year and see what's up.
I'm Meg Mulroy, School Counselor and Internal Coach at Eisenhower Elementary School. Wonder who that young man is on the left in that picture? The Eisenhower Way. We have these posters all over the building. We targeted three areas. The hallway, the bathrooms, that they be quiet and left clean when using them, and exiting our cafeteria after lunch to go to the playground in a safe manner. The interesting thing with Eisenhower was, two years ago, we had sort of a PBIS thing going in our hallways, where you had zero for silence, one for quiet voice, and two for normal voice. So, our teachers already had somewhat experienced the positive behavior. And our energy in the program. And on Fridays, when all the tickets come into the office, the announcements weren't read for the reward. And by Monday, these kids are asking the teachers, they're asking, when are the rewards coming? When are the rewards coming? So, they're keeping us at our toes to keep this, this going and alive. And there they are with their proud eagles. So, and I benefit. They love picking courtyard lunch. So, I don't know what we're going to do when it gets colder out. But the other part of this is Second Step is also a district initiative, but it also is at Eisenhower. All our classroom teachers do teach Second Step. And it does go along with PBIS, because it does teach all of our students, the whole student body. It's just not a group of students that are taught Second Step. It's everyone. And there are three areas in Second Step: empathy training, problem-solving, and anger management. And those are three behavior areas. It's on the Tier One. It's universal. It's for all students. So, it's a nice combination of the two things coming together, Second Step and PBS.
Just very briefly, right here, we have a couple of pictures from Jefferson Elementary. And it really just speaks to teaching the expectations in all environments. As you can see in the picture on the left, these are some students learning what to do when you come to the office. And these are, these are the expected behaviors when you're in the office. And they're learning from the office staff. It's not, they're not just hearing it from their classroom teacher. They're hearing it from everybody. On the right, as you see, this, again, all environments. This, I was getting a drink of water at Jefferson and looked up, and sure enough, these were the expectations for the bubbler. And they were spelled out, and they were, you know, the reminder to me, you know, to take count from five and take my little drink and be on my merry way. So, now, we'll have Madison come on up.
Hi. I'm Lynn Messerian. I'm the School Counselor and Internal Coach for PBIS.
I am Johnny Rommel, and I'm the fifth-grade teacher at Madison.
I'm Deb Brooks. I'm a special education teacher at Madison.
And they're just two of our PBIS team who are with me tonight. We have the Madison Creed, which is, I am positive. I am prepared. I am polite. And then, underneath, I am a terrific person. And we started this last year before we started implementing PBIS. And last year, it was, I am a terrific kid. But as a result of our PBIS training, we realized it's not just the kids who need to be terrific. It's everybody in the building. So, the terrific is actually an acronym for the pillars, the character pillars. So, trustworthy, respectful, responsible, fair, caring, and citizenship. So, we have our visual reminders around our school as well. We have the zero, one, two, which is our voice volume. Zero is silent. One is a whisper. And two is an outside voice, regular talking. We are creating some different ways of helping our students to remember the expectations. And since we are an elementary school, we like to put a lot of things to music. So, the music teacher and I have put the majority of our matrix to song. And I have a sample of that for you right now. Oh, shoot. I can't do that. I helped to write the songs, but I don't sing, sadly. Thankfully, our, Dr. Erdel got to hear our music teacher perform when Mr. Brennan was awarded the Teacher of the Year at our school. So...
So, it's not going to play?
Right click. Maybe right-click on it.
Bummer. Okay. It's a really great song.
Just view. Take it out of slideshow, maybe? End show. Does it click? Try clicking it then.
We'll figure out a way to get it to you.
Yeah, we will get it to you.
I'm glad you want to hear it, though. That's awesome. Okay. We are doing some things to celebrate success at Madison. And we began the pillar assemblies last year. Each month, we take one of the character pillars. And each grade level takes one of those characters and teaches that character trait to the rest of the school. So, we, the students do skits, songs, those kinds of things, and teach that trait. We have traveling trophies from all of our specialists, art, music, gym. I do an attendance award each month. And those trophies go out based on the character pillar for that month, to the classroom who's exhibited that, that character trait. This year, we've added the horseshoe award, which is our PBIS traveling award. And that goes for, to the classroom who has been positive, prepared, and polite. And this award is not, is given by the rest of the staff in the building. They fill out a form where they nominate the class and explain why they're nominating that class to receive this award. And then, the majority wins. Whoever gets the most of those horseshoe notices, that class and that teacher gets recognized at the assembly and gets our horseshoe award. Another thing that we are implementing this year are our rodeos. We are the Madison Mustangs. And so, we must have a rodeo. So, we haven't had our first one yet, but it's coming up in December. And this is going to be all about celebrating PBIS. So, we'll probably take the time to take one of our areas in the school, maybe our lunchroom, and do a refresher and get our students involved in reteaching that and in celebrating all of the great PBIS things that we're doing in our school. We also have our Madison Mustang tickets, and we do weekly drawings with that in the cafeteria. And the kids get to choose different prizes. Our PTA had a fantastic book sale and donated $1,400 worth of books to the PBIS team to be able to give out as rewards to our students. So, we're very excited about that.
Hello. I'm Karen Summerman. I'm the School Social Worker and Internal Coach at Washington School. For many years, our school has implemented the philosophy of responsive classroom, and that covered a lot of the building, the community. The areas of the lunchroom, arrival, dismissal, bathroom, hallway. And we came up with a behavior matrix that we put together and under three key points, which was be safe, be responsible, and be respectful. And in the poster, it kind of gives, the sample And in the poster, it kinda gives, the sample that I have over here, kinda talks about the behavior expectations that we have for those students, and in this poster, we're highlighting the hallway. Also, what was, I think was a key component with this, is that we also came up with staff expectations. So, we had a staff matrix of how we wanted staff to behave in, in supporting the teacher, the students' expectations. So, it's agreements that the staff have made with each other so that we can ensure consistency and fidelity of the expectations that we want students to learn. So, the first three days of school, every single student went through the six stations and learned the Washington way of how to behave in the non-classroom settings. In these pictures up here, you see our classroom teachers are the ones illustrated in the pictures, but it actually was non-classroom teachers that taught the stations, because we wanted to emphasize to the students, it's not only hearing from your teacher, it's everyone is expecting you to live up to the Washington way. But, the key important part of also the stations was that the teachers also participated and helped the facilitators of those stations do their work, so that the teachers can reinforce with the students in their classrooms, the Washington way. And it's quite often that I will hear, especially like in the hallways, remember the Washington way. And when you wanna speak to a student that isn't, maybe not doing the things that they should be doing, you ask them a question, "What is the Washington way?", and immediately you can see them responding, and they know what the expectations are. I think the important part with PBIS is that we just don't assume that students know the expectations we actually teach them. So, part of our plan also is to be able to acknowledge, we also have, like what the other schools have said, we have the pause coupons, and every week, students are, one student is picked out of each classroom to come down to the office to get their picture taken with their Timber Wolf. And that is such an honor, and that is posted also up in our cafeteria, and kids cannot wait to have their chance to get their picture taken with that. The other thing that we also have done is collected data to see how we're doing with the expectations, and then we have plans to also reteach the places that we need to reteach if something is not going quite the way that we want it to.
I'm Mary Susan Cable, the Internal Coach at Wilson TSHST, and I am a special education teacher there. So much of what everybody else has said goes along with us as well. About four or five years ago, we did start be safe, be responsible, be respectful. So, this summer, we took that as our theme, using the "B." And we are a unique elementary school because we are one building with two schools. So, to bring us together, we are the Beehive, and we have the Charter School and Wilson. And what we have done is a lot of the cool tools, and we're putting, we're explaining to the students, we're taking it from, that nobody knows exactly what to do either. So, we are all teaching, and, and that's just a part of what we're doing. We do have our B-Bucks, and the B-Bucks are given out to the students that are following the behaviors. And then our 5th graders said, "We really need to get something like a Queen Bee Buck for the, the classrooms that are walking down the hallway appropriately or coming in from the playground, and those are worth five points." So, I'll let Mike continue.
Good evening, I just wanna start with TSHST. What you're, what you're hearing about tonight is, is all the positive success in buildings because of teacher buy-in. If there's not the teacher buy-in, you're simply not gonna have the follow-through with students. At Wilson, it was pretty easy for me, being the new person, I figured, "Let's rebrand, let's reissue this." So, we opened up, my first two days on the job with students, although many, many weeks of planning before that, with two assemblies. The first one hit 'em with the positive of what we expect and what it might look like. We did some streaming video clips, we buzzed. Dr. Erdl was there to buzz a little bit. Would anyone like to buzz? Anyone? No? Here, well, we buzzed. And then the second day, the second assembly, we reinforced again the positive, but then we hit them with, "What happens if you make a poor choice? You get stung." And so, we have our B-Bucks and our sting slips, and the B-Bucks acknowledge the positive. And at the end of each week, students, as you saw on the slide before, there's a little B-bucket, they deposit their B-Bucks in the bucket, and there's a little system we have for drawing those names. To date, we have collected 2,897 B-Bucks from our students, which is huge. If we hit 10,000 B-Bucks, and I'm not sure that I wanna put this on tape, but I will dress up like a bee for the day. So, 10,000 B-Bucks is our goal. You can see our big buck-ometer as you walk into the building, it's being printed by Stephen Elrod as we speak, and those B-Bucks are collected each week, and then I make a drawing of five names, and I make a positive phone call home as a principal of the school to their mom and dad, and I think they really, that's my best part of my week, is being able to say something positive to someone before I head out for the weekend. It doesn't get any better than that. So, again, our staff has bought in, it's, it's for all kids, for all staff, all the time, except we're not doing it in all areas. The classrooms are still available to teachers discretion, and they get to establish their own communities in their rooms. However, we're looking at the hallway, bathroom, cafeteria, and playground as our high-yield areas, we're gonna be trying to reinforce the be respectful, be responsible, be safe within. And our PTSA has gone with it now, they have their spring social named "We Believe," and they're really going with this whole theme, and it's been pretty positive, amazingly positive, in a building that's got two very unique learning environments, so.
Well, there you have it, there's some really great examples of PBIS kind of inaction at the schools that have begun to implement it. And I use, maybe overuse this quote, but I, I love it, and I think it's, it really highlights why I'm excited about this, why I think a lot of staff, students, and families are getting excited about this. If a child doesn't know how to read, we teach. If a child doesn't know how to swim, we teach. If a child doesn't know how to multiply, we teach. If a child doesn't know how to drive, we teach. If a child doesn't know how to behave, we teach, punish. Why can't we finish this sentence as automatically as we do the others? And I think that's so powerful, that, that we have, we're with students for a large amount of their day, and it's exciting for us to be working with them, and it's exciting to be working together. And PBIS helps to kinda frame that practice and help us work a little bit more effectively, a lot more effectively, and use that time we have with students for, for all of our benefits. So, as we move through this, I hope to provide you with other updates and kind of a little bit more of a picture of what PBIS looks like in the future as well. But otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you to everybody for your presentation. I'm guessing we're gonna have some questions. Board members. Comments? Mr. Carter?
Mr. Leach, you shocked me when you talked about calling parents home for good reason, and I realize that I don't know that I've received a phone call from a teacher. There's some smirks out there. So, I'd like to throw out a suggestion for this program, is maybe have every teacher in the district call home for each student at least once during the year when something good happens. You know, at, at the end of every week, maybe call one or two kids, parents, and say, you know, "Your child did a great poster," or "This person wrote a great paper," or "You wrote a great science report." I'm just throwing that out there because that, usually I hear, you hear from teachers when things aren't going so well. So, maybe a positive phone call home would be a good idea for everyone to do.
Part of what East is doing, it's part of PBIS, is that we're putting together postcards, so every, we're trying to figure out the logistics, but we would like to have every student, pre-printed, have postcards, so that by the end of the year, every student will have two postcards sent home from teachers saying something positive about them. We're trying to find a way so that we make sure that not a small group of kids gets a lot of, too many postcards, so that everyone gets some positive reinforcement. So, we are, that we're right in line with what you're thinking.
My second comment was about East as well, because you were talking about first period tardies. And I'm just gonna mention that I remember reading their couple of studies out that show that some people think we have start times of school backwards, that small kids love to get up early and run to school early, and teenagers, well, you know, they don't like to do that. So, some districts are reversing, they're having, you know, elementary kids start at quarter, seven, eight, and have the high schools start half hour, 45 minutes later, and that's had a pretty big impact on attitude and attention and getting to school on time. So, maybe as we reevaluate secondary school schedules, that's something for us to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I think that's a really, that's a great point to make, because part of PBIS is looking at what we have in place for our environment. What are we setting up for kids, and how can we change our environment or, or change our structure to maximize that student's success? So, that, that would be definitely an example if we were to look at that. It's looking at our school environment and how we can set students up more for success. Yeah.
And now to my more serious comment. As a board member, we see students when they've had the most extreme poor behavior, and it's not a very pleasant experience. And one thing I've noticed that seems fairly consistent is that these are students that are not experiencing success in school. And I'm just wondering if part of the PBIS model, or how that integrates with, especially middle school on up, with kids not doing well in school, and how that impacts their behavior? But when, when someone misbehaves, do you also look at how they're performing in the classroom and try to correct?
Yeah.
Are they misbehaving because they just don't like school, because they're not doing well? And how would you address that as part of the program?
Sort of, yeah. And I, I think the, the important point is to look at students from a very global perspective. What's all, what's all going on with the students? What's all impacting their learning and impacting their engagement with the school? Which is why I think you hear a lot of the schools talk about school engagement, school connectedness. Rapport building with students is such a key factor, because we know that students who feel connected and engaged in their school are more invested to do well academically, and they're more invested to make positive choices in terms of their behavior as well. So, you know, I, I think you're right, we definitely, that's always going to be, that will be a challenge. And I think with this, it helps to frame our practice a little bit more in terms of looking at the whole picture for the student, and when we, when the student does need a Tier Two or Tier Three level of intervention, we're doing a really solid assessment of that student and the situation to kind of mesh all these things, so that we're not all working separately, and we're all not working towards different goals. We need to come together and find common goals for that. And I think that will help some of the students who we have traditionally seen need that level, that really high intense level of support.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wilf?
Are you planning some type of summary that you can present to us at the, possibly the end of the school year, early spring, so that we know the pluses and also if there are any minuses?
Yeah, definitely. I think when I was talking to a few people about doing this presentation, I think the, the key piece is also looking at it, in our first year of implementation, how that went, and talking with you all about it, talking with the community about it, talking within our schools, what went well and what didn't. So, yeah, I would be happy to do that. Happy.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Milva?
Only that, this was just a sampling of schools tonight, but all of the schools are participating at some level? No?
Currently, we have eight schools in the district that are trained in the Tier One level of implementation. It's three days of training, and some schools went through it this past spring, some schools went through it this past summer, and other schools will be going through it this December. Traditionally, the way PBIS has been rolled out in districts or in states is that you want to get a wave of schools kind of interested and excited about it, and then build on that and keep, keep the momentum going, which is why some schools went at first, and then word got out and excitement was building, and, and some schools were trained this summer. And then we're offering another training here in our district in December. There, and there are continued opportunities around the state. The Wisconsin PBIS Network has come out of the Wisconsin RTI Center, and they schedule several, several trainings in various locations around the state, so that will be available for, to us for the long haul. Different schools are at, are at different points in terms of their readiness, because there are different school cultures, and there are different, you know, dynamics in every building, and we recognize that. But I think each school is, is working towards looking at this and, and kind of adopting different practices in their, in their daily work.
Well, I see you have a lot of strengths, and you're very dynamic, so I think it's very exciting for our district.
Thank you.
Me too.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, an opportunity for community comment with respect to our presentation on positive behavior intervention and supports.
Beth Fredrickson, 7927 Warren Avenue. I remember about 12 years ago, the district brought in a guest speaker to talk about bullying and cliques. And this, a woman whose name, I can't remember her name, but she did her research in school lunchrooms. And she observed lunchrooms, cafeterias, and I, and she wrote a book, and she did all these presentations, and it was very powerful. And I remember her results around why cliques form, why some kids become bullies, other kids bully. And listening, particular to the young lady from Longfellow, made me feel glad and excited that this is a piece, I think, of other things that we're doing for a kind of a holistic approach to improving student behavior around social skills and adult expectations for what's appropriate and how we relate to one another in the school building, during the school day, with your peers, with your teachers. I love hearing that parents are being notified, and they know something about this, you know, I'm all about communication. And the more we can engage the community and parents to tell them what we're doing, I think the better. And the only other thing I wanna say is, my middle child graduated, obviously, three years too late, because he had accumulated about 34 first-hour tardies at Wauwautosi East High School. So, I just wanna tell you to be alert for bright kids who go by their middle names instead of their first names, because they figure out how to fool the people in the front office.
Hi, my name is Tracy Petrowski, my address is 2420 North 89th Street. I am commenting as a parent. My children attend TSHST, and I am really proud of Mr. Leach and the whole staff at Wilson TSHST community. And I wanna stress the word "community" because I really feel like that is what we, you know, what we're striving for, and that's our goal, and I really feel like that is all kind of coming to fruition. And I can feel the excitement of my children and all the children at the school. There's a real positive vibe when you walk in the school, and I'll be happy to say that I was one of the parents that were called a few Fridays ago, and I was shocked, because I didn't know that was a kind of a component of our, of what you guys were enacting, and it just was a real, a real pleasure. And I think, you know, that's, it's gonna be a great thing for our school community, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hollander, I live at 2225 North 69th Street. I also have, I have children both in TSHST and in Wilson, so they're combined in the building, but one community, which is awesome. And the, the one thing I love the most is that what is happening in school is spilling out onto the playground to the parents. And you see the parents connecting and being positive and, and, and connecting with each other. I've actually heard some parents kind of threaten other parents that their children were gonna get the trophy next week. There's this trophy that travels from room to room, whoever gets the most B-Bucks, and so it, it, but it's, it's fun, it's cajoling, you know, the, and it's just a great environment. So, thank you so much for bringing this to our schools.
Hi, Kristy Casey, 635 North 78th Street. I'm here to support Mr. Leach and the fine PBIS implementation at Wilson and TSHST. One of the things I think that has really spoken to me tonight is the expectation. And when you set the expectation, the, the staff and the parents and the students will rise to meet that expectation. It has really started our community off to a wonderful start. I think as we navigate these waters of two different learning communities in one building, what brings us together is that we do have a common expectation, we have a common goal, and it's really about how we treat each other, and that's really what has been binding us this year. The phone calls home are just so great. I was in a classroom, and at the end of the day on Friday, Mr. Leach announces the phone calls of the children that he's made home and why he's called their home. And I was in the classroom, and the child that got a phone call home, it rivaled a touchdown at Lambo, with a Lambo leap, by the other kids, like congratulating him. So, it, it's really been a great addition to our, our school community. And it's kind of unclear, but I think the parents are the EpiPens, but we're, we're still working that out. But I appreciate the district's. But I appreciate the district's effort in this area. Thank you.
One observation that I've been thinking about as I've been listening and listening to some of the community comments, and I'm also tying this together with some comments that we heard at our last meeting and even some emails that we've been receiving recently. But I think there's some, in the, some families in the district that are concerned about all students being included and all students being recognized for who they are and for what they are, and sometimes experiencing some frustrations because maybe their student isn't being met that way or not being perceived that way, not being welcomed by other students. Sometimes not even being given the, naturally being looked at as a student who can be a great, successful achiever. They might not carry that with them when they walk into the classroom. And this program seems to be another opportunity to address issues of that nature, especially, I mean, if we're starting in all the schools and you think about five, six, seven years from now, with someone who's in elementary school now and who carries those types of behaviors and develops those attitudes and takes them into the middle school and then takes them from the middle school into high school, it seems to me that's a very much positive opportunity to even to strengthen some of those feelings of inclusion and expectation and just natural respect for students who maybe are, have different social backgrounds, who have different academic backgrounds and experiences, but to really, really build on something positive. And it just seems like this program has some real great possibilities in terms of working on that. So like Mrs. Weber said, I think we look forward to hearing more information and just we look forward to hearing about positive experiences that you guys experience in the buildings as this program has continued to be implemented. So thanks again. I appreciate your staying throughout the meeting. If anybody has to worry about a tardy slip tomorrow, I'll call Dr. Erdl.
I'll be in line.
But thanks very much. We have a couple, one or two other items to go on to in the superintendent report. Dr. Erdl?
The first item is, a question was raised to me by a board member about how that the attendance and reimbursement and representation of school board members representing the district, how that's handled, how that's controlled. And I didn't have a good answer, and I looked into board policy to see how it was addressed. And it's really not. I mean, the situation comes down to if it's left up to me ultimately, the way it is right now, and that doesn't make sense that I would be the one, the keeper of deciding whether a board member can participate in a conference or convention, something like that. So what I brought forward is a recommendation to change our bylaws that would address that concern for now and into the future so we don't create, we don't have major issues with this, so.
Questions from the board? Mr. Mark?
Just a comment that, at least on the financial aspect, that sort of sourced with me because it just struck me one time when I was at West High School with Dr. Erdl. He introduced me as one of his bosses. And I just didn't feel real comfortable with that. But if I have an expense and I present it to Dr. Erdl for payment, his look at me is that I'm one of his bosses. And from a financial control point of view, that's not right to put him in that spot. That it's something where, you know, as board members, we should approve each other's expenses and not simply hand the receipts to the superintendent and expect payment without any visibility to it. And it's sort of in line with the idea that this is a very conservative school district and we do watch our money very closely. And it's not a district where we have had any issues, although I know others, districts have had issues with board member expenses related to things. So it's just part of good process that if a check is going to be written to or on behalf of a board member, that the rest of the board approve it. And to comment on the attendance question, if, I believe if a board member is attending a conference or under color of, you know, the board, the full board, where perhaps policy decisions are being made, recommendations are being formulated, that the board should be required to provide guidance on those things. For example, when I was the Wasby delegate a couple of years ago, I came to the board in a meeting prior to that and asked for the board's, the full board's guidance on how to vote on particular things. And I remember Eileen Donahue did so as well when she was a Wasby representative. So it's just part of good practice that if one of us is going to be out representing the district, that, you know, the board, the full board be required to put some thought into it and to give some guidance on our positions for topics that may come up.
Ms. Weber?
I think we need to remember always that we are, when we go out to these conventions, that we are not speaking as an individual, but we represent the Wauwatosi School Board and community. And sometimes I think we forget that, and you want to put forth your opinion. And we must be sure to put forth the support, the feeling, the beliefs of the Wauwatosi School Board and community.
Mark?
I have a question about what's actually written here. For attending meetings where it's, or preapproval is required, that's for the purpose of attending the meeting, correct? That expenses will be incurred? And then the board is separate? Then this is the second sentence required, that that would come before the board after the request?
Yes.
And would that likely be like in a consent agenda usually? Or?
Certainly can be up to the board or it can be a separate, I mean, that is up to you how you'd want it placed on the agenda.
Okay. Mark?
My thinking was that, of course, now it's in the check register, but that's not much visibility, you know, if one of us is spending the taxpayers' money. So I haven't given any... An eight dollar receipt for parking when you go somewhere is, you know, perhaps a little silly, but at least it should be separately called out in the consent agenda so that it's visible, you know, instead of, you know, somebody having to line by line leaf through the check register to try to find something, you know. So I would think consent agenda would be fine, just might, just right now, you know, we're just discussing if it were a separate item on the agenda. Now, you know, if somebody, you know, goes to a convention in California and spends $15,000, which has never happened, that's, you know, we'll probably call that one off the consent agenda, you know. But that's the point, is that if it's not a big, any of us have the ability to call something off of the consent agenda.
Ms. Milfo?
Well, it will require us to be more diligent and disciplined about preapproving board attendance at any functions. And, you know, sometimes there are more last minute decisions, and that has been the case sometimes with some of the delegations by the board president for some of these things. But, I mean, I think it's all good. I don't see why, I think this is a good language. It will just force us to be more disciplined, and I think it will call out what is, what is the purpose? Why are we going to these meetings? Learning, what we're learning? How are we disseminating the information? I think it will call for the discussion by attaching a dollar amount to it. Because if you go to the National School Board Association Convention, that's quite a pricey convention. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards, if you're the delegate, typically you don't need to pay. But if you want to go to any of the sessions, there is payment required. There are other expenses for food and parking and other travel that goes along with it. And I see no reason why we can't do that, but we have to be very diligent and then send people in a timely manner and approve them on our board agendas in a timely manner.
Ray?
Yes, Mr. Crowder, I'm sorry. I'm studying the language here.
I guess that would be my only concern is if people, sometimes you don't know if you're going to a meeting, especially a local meeting, till a week or less before the meeting. I don't know if there's a way to write language so that you would still be able to get reimbursed if you go to a legitimate meeting and have legitimate expenses without board approval first. So I don't know if there's a way to write that in here. So it's a little more lenient as far as getting preapproval at a previous board meeting.
Mark?
Well, you know, for example, Mr. Ray, Vice President, responsible for legislative liaison activities, you know, if there were some opportunity that he had to go meet with somebody, would we want board preapproval? I would think not. You know, he's charged with that responsibility. If there were expenses, then regardless, they would be separately itemized in the consent agenda. You know, I guess it comes down to a judgment call. And the idea that the expenses are... If we don't like the fact that the person was out speaking for the board, that they should have come to the board beforehand, we don't have to approve the expense. You know, I mean, when it comes right down to it, you know, there's, of course, a lot of gray areas. Like I registered to go to the Wasby School Law Seminar, and I paid with my own money and ultimately I couldn't go. And I wasn't, you know, I was kind of torn about, not torn, but it's like, well, I'm not going representing the Wauwatosi School District, yet, you know, I didn't want to misrepresent that I was a school board member somewhere either, you know, to hide that. So what to do, what to do? Sounds kind of silly, but maybe that's one of the kinds of things you're talking about. You know, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have served on any committees. I wouldn't have, you know, been party to any recommendations. I may have asked a question, and I would have paid for my own lunch. So, and my own expense, you know. So would that have to come to the board first or at least notice the board that I was planning to attend? Well, maybe yes. Maybe that would be polite for me to do that, you know, when otherwise I wouldn't have thought to do that.
I think how someone represents the board or what they're going to say at a meeting is a different issue than what is addressed here. This is just simply getting reimbursed for a meeting that you attended. I think one way to fix this, to make it easy, is for, to get preapproval to go to a meeting from the board president. And then when you come back, the full board can approve the expenses. And that way, if you go to a meeting at the last minute locally, or you're driving to Madison for a meeting that you didn't hear about until four days before, the board president could approve your trip, and then you could come back and submit your expenses for reimbursement, and the board would approve those at the next board meeting. That way, I think you'd have the flexibility to get to a meeting and still have board president approval.
Another way you could, you could address it is to set a dollar amount and say that if you're going to be asking for reimbursement of more than X number of dollars, then that should be obtained in advance. And if it's that number or lower, then it doesn't, then approval of that dollar amount wouldn't necessarily need to be obtained in advance. You could still ask for it later. That might be a way to put some kind of check on it as well. Milfo?
Well, I'm not sure what we're really after here because our current policy is talking about conferences, conventions, and workshops, which is, I think, some of our discussion is separate to the expenses of board members. So there are expenses related to conferences, conventions, and workshops, but if you want to expand that, how do you want to approve those expenses? So I don't see it problematic either way. I just want to make sure that we, you know, truly capture what we want to accomplish and how we want to do that. Because if Mr. Ray has, you know, we used that example before, he has travel time because he is going to meet with some legal representatives because he is our main contact on the board for that, his expenses aren't going to show up in conferences, conventions, and workshops. They're going to be separate from that.
The one other piece I think you're kind of missing a little bit is the approval to attend as well. For example, and it's been, as superintendent, I've been offered this several times, all expenses paid trip to a resort in California to support or to go learn about leadership from this company that would then, I'm sure, expect me to join their group. There's things like that. Board members could be asked as well. And then even though there's no expenses, is that something, you know, again, I would be in a pretty difficult situation to make that decision and say, yeah, go ahead, or, I mean, so that's outside of the expense piece. It's the representation because you're representing the Wauwatosi School Board and something like that.
And here's another thing that strikes me.
I don't get those offers all the time, but once a year.
It looks like we're taking the paragraph, the short paragraph, attendance at local, county, state, and national workshops and conferences is encouraged. And then we're talking about adding one paragraph, or one sentence to that, for clarification. And the sentence that we're talking about adding references both getting approval for attendance and it also references approval for expenses. And maybe what we ought to do to make this a little bit more, we're not mixing apples and oranges, is take the language about reimbursement for expenses out of that paragraph and just leave it only about getting approval for attendance as one concept. And then in the next paragraph or the paragraph down below where it talks about travel and personal expenses, et cetera, et cetera, in that paragraph, keep that, the focus of that paragraph on expenses. And I think we probably should add something to that paragraph about board approval is required to authorize any payments to or on behalf of board members for any purpose. And then perhaps build something in there about to what extent do we want to get preapproval or to what extent do we want to leave some leeway for not preapproval. But I think what maybe makes it a little bit awkward is trying to blend both of those concepts into that one proposed new sentence. Instead of blending those two concepts, keep them separated in separate paragraphs in the bylaw here. Mr. Mark?
Well, I agree. It's two separate concepts. The one concept is if the taxpayers are going to write a check to one of us, the rest of us should approve. Separate concept. If the idea of preapproval for a certain amount sort of eliminates some risk to any individual that, well, you should have known that you weren't allowed to spend that much, you know. You know, where if I, I never have given a parking receipt to the school district, but if I do come in and it's a $10 parking fee and the board says, no, we're not going to pay your parking when you go downtown to Milwaukee, you know, for Wasby or whatever, well, I lose, but it's only 10 bucks, you know. But if it was like a $200 registration, maybe I'd want to get myself covered ahead of time that the board was willing to pay that because I don't want to... that the board was willing to pay that because I don't want to, nobody wants to lose 10 bucks, but 200 bucks is a lot bigger deal. The other issue, as you're saying, is for example, you know, where I didn't understand what to do was, you know, Mrs. Muefeld came to me a week or two ago about some, and you'll have to explain, I don't quite know what it is, some Wasbe committee that's writing proposals for the convention. And to give her feedback, well, that's something where I didn't want to do that by myself. I'm not comfortable doing that. So, that sort of thing, I'd rather come to the whole board than we have some, and we don't have a mechanism for that. You know, there's no, we haven't laid down any guidelines for how she should do that. So, you know, no harm, but going forward, do we want those questions to be... Want to consider those as the full board, you know? Is that different from the Vice President's ability to be legislative liaison? Maybe it's no different. I don't know.
Ms. Weber?
Usually there's notice and I, in fact, I think the legislative requests have gone out already. I think I read that last month. And that comes usually to the board and the board submits those resolutions. It's not usually an individual. It's the entire board that would do that. And we've done that in the past at a board meeting for something we'd like to submit. In fact, we've, in the past, we have submitted resolution ideas.
Well, let me, let me put some clarification to it because I think this is a great example. At the regional meeting last year of Wasbe, I went to the dinner and they asked for board members interested in serving on the Policy and Resolutions Committee for the Delegate Assembly. I said I was willing to volunteer, but I didn't hear anything and I didn't hear anything. And at this year's regional dinner, I asked because I hadn't received any notice and they said that they were, everyone was picked, so I figured I wasn't on the volunteer list. But then a day or two after that dinner, I received a huge packet in the mail, which was only a week and a half before the actual meeting. The, this is a kind of a new committee that they have put together where districts submit the resolutions and then the committee reviews them and has the opportunity to revise the language before sending them to the Delegate Assembly for the Wasbe Convention in January. So, it's a, kind of an in-between committee and there are about 25 school districts serving on this committee. So, it was a very, very quick. Now, Wasbe is paying all of the expenses for the meetings that I have attended. There were some resolutions on there that I asked Dr. Erdl help for. I asked Mr. Meyer just for an opinion because I knew that he was very strong on an opinion, but he said he didn't really have one from last year. So, it, it's, it's kind of an in-between committee. I also serve, as the board is aware, on the CISA One, as a CISA One delegate, and I also serve on the CISA One Board of Control. So, I am attending the Wasbe Convention as a delegate for the CISA One Board of Control. So, just for your information, it's kind of all tied together. I won't be Wauwatosa's delegate. I'll be the CISA One Board of Control delegate. But I am serving on this Resolutions Committee as a board member for the Wauwatosa School District. However, there aren't any expenses tied to it for the Wauwatosa School Board. So, I asked for Dr. Erdl and the administration's opinion on some of the resolutions, especially for open enrollment, but those aren't going to be published yet because this Policy and Resolutions Committee works on them and the last meeting is in November where they finalize those and send them out to the school district. So, that's how that works. What do we do with that? You know, I mean, in the future, I, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but that's exactly how this transpired very quickly. The next meeting again of this committee is November 12th.
Well, if- ...was a $7 million topic for us. And without that open enrollment revenue, we would be a vastly different school district. There really shouldn't be any discussion by an individual board member at a Wasbe Resolution Writing Committee without first coming to the full board because it has a profound effect on what we are as a school district. So, whatever position that is, it needs to be brought to the board before it gets communicated as the position of the Wauwatosa School District when those resolutions are being drafted.
But again, this is an interim committee before it goes to the delegate floor. And the delegate floor debates whether they will, so these will come to the Wauwatosa School Board for debate.
But you're acting way beyond your authority to be drafting or party to drafting of a resolution. I mean, the idea that once that resolution is drafted and brought to the full convention for debate, it's not an easy thing to change the wording on those resolutions. There's a lot of power involved in the original writing of those resolutions. So, you know, that is something, from my judgment at least, it needs to be brought to the full board.
I, I mean, I, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, the Wasbe Resolutions Committee, I think, Policy and Resolutions Committee is very new. It, it, it's made up of many, many school districts across the state. Our region can send two representatives. They took my volunteer post and that's how it transpired. So, if-
Did you consult with the board president?
Well, I contacted Dr. Erdl, so, you know, I mean, there really wasn't a mechanism and, you know, I mean, I guess we can find out more clarity, but if the board, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit in an awkward position because the full board should definitely debate the resolutions that are final, but this is kind of an in, kind of an in-between. I mean, I'll take your direction on it. I've given you what I know.
All right. There's, there's, discussion is going on at sort of two levels right now. And I think we need to stick to the level of what we've agendaed. And the agenda has to do with should we modify the bylaw. Muefeld and Mrs. Meyer, and Mr. Meyer are talking about a situation that may involve an example of why we want to-
Right.
-modify the bylaws. I, I don't think that we have consensus this evening that the language that's been presented is the language that we want to necessarily adopt, but it does sound like we want to continue to explore some language to, to add to this particular bylaw, to capture not only some of the specific comments that we've made tonight, but also to address circumstances like the one that Ms. Muefeld is describing. And unfortunately, when you try to write a bylaw or a policy with a specific set of circumstances in mind, your bylaw or policy may become too narrow or too broad. It may address that specific circumstance, but it may also cause some awkward situations or circumstances for other issues that may come up. So, having said all of that, my suggestion is that we do the following. Dr. Erdl, tell us the origination of the proposed language that we see on the modification that has been presented for consideration this evening.
I got it from you. I don't know where it came from before. It's handwritten. But I, but I just want to point out that you're, you're calling this an addition to the sentence of the paragraph before. I was, it was my understanding, these are two separate paragraphs in those two separate sections. Is that correct?
And that's, it was a little-
It's definitely set up to be an additional paragraph. I mean, I don't know if we put it in the same paragraph, does that change the meaning or not?
Here's what I would suggest. Processing the comments that you've heard this evening, can you and Mrs. Fee modify the language, work on modifying the language that we've, that's down here and then maybe bring it back for further consideration, taking into, taking into account some of the things we talked about such as agreement that approval for board authorize, or for pay, for expenses that board, board members may, may want covered is required, but perhaps there's a dollar amount at which above and beyond that dollar amount, there should be advanced approval requirement. And below that dollar amount, perhaps we don't need advanced approval. The approval can be obtained after the fact. And then also some language that addresses board member attendance and board member participation at local, county, state, and national workshops that would perhaps encompass the type of situation that Mrs. Muefeld addressed this evening as well. Yes?
No.
No, no, no. I, I'm saying the language here probably doesn't encompass that. I'm suggesting that Dr. Erdl and Mrs. Fee work on some new language that would encompass that type of situation and then bring that back to us for additional consideration before we go on.
I will-
Yes. I think that it's probably maybe more productive to come back with a, with a modified suggestion for further discussion as opposed to trying to hash something out this evening.
I would agree.
All right.
But just to conclude something, Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I will follow up with Mrs. Fee and Dr. Erdl about how to proceed with this next step for the Wasbe Policy and Resolutions Committee, so.
And I think that makes sense under the circumstances because there really isn't specific guidance right now for how to deal with that situation, at least not from a written policy or bylaw point of view.
Well, and it seems like there is board interest in, in learning about that and I just need to figure out with Dr. Erdl and Ms. Fee and the guidelines of this committee, how in fact, you know, we can do that, so.
Long-range plan update?
I'll just turn it over to Laura.
As you know, the Long Range Plan Committee reconvened. We only had nine members who were on the original committee. We had 38 members in total. The rest were all new to the Long Range Plan. And then on October 6th, we're, the whole committee learned about all the things we've done from the 2006, 2007 Long Range Plan. And as you know, it was an extensive document, eight, one-page long, and it was quite a long review. We've done a lot in the last few years. This time, the committee took a different route and we talked about 21st century skills. And so, the first meeting centered on some of the things we do as a district that are strong, strongly already tending toward 21st century- ...our technology, our leadership and responsibility, and our school environment. At the October 13th meeting, we split apart and we talked about different strategies we'd like to see the district incorporate for the future of the Long Range Plan. And the committee came up with three strategies. One was based on relationships and partnerships. The second was looked based on the learning environment and the third was based on data-driven decisions. Those were all included in the, in the agenda packet, but I'll go ahead and read those to you. First one, the Wauwatosa School District will work to maximize relationships and partnerships among and between members of the educational community as well as the greater community in preparing students for participation, achievement, and competitiveness in a global society. The second strategy, the Wauwatosa School District will transform the learning environment in order to ensure access to curriculum and personalized learning for all students, resulting in individuals who embrace 21st century skills and who are lifelong learners. And the third strategy, the Wauwatosa School District will use data-driven decision-making to create clear performance expectations for students, staff, and key stakeholders, leading to an increased student achievement. And if you remember from the last Long Range Plan, once we have the strategies, we now have to form action teams. These action teams will write the action steps to carry out the strategies. And those action steps will be carried out and implemented by implementation teams. As you know, we're continuing to do things from the last Long Range Plan, so there will still be overlap. We are not done with the first version of the Long Range Plan.
Just a brief question, so I didn't quite catch that. So, this is going to result in a new and separate document from-
I think we're, we're merging in on what's happened over the years. Now, we have the District Development Plan. And when you look at that development plan, many things from the 2007 Long Range Plan are included in it as an initiative or a project. So, what I'm, I'm thinking, if I'm correct, Dr. Erdl, correct or not, that we will continue to use these action steps and implement them as projects and initiatives or with the District Development Plans.
As well as the new implementation steps that, that come out that will be put also into, to the District Development Plan. So, they're running separately, yet kind of putting the old one to bed to some degree, but still keeping aspects of it going forward in the District Development Plan and then creating the new ones. I mean, I, I think a lot of what you see in the old plan fits right in with these three areas.
But, yeah, because I remember some of the, some of the best action steps in the old plan are long range, you know, so there's something that we'll keep working with. I just didn't know how it was going to mesh with the new thing. Thank you.
Other question?
Mrs. Ray, Scott, I'm sorry. I was focused on two things here. The, the group met in October on the 6th and the 13th. The next step for the group then is?
Well, members of that group can offer to volunteer and work on an action team. The action team is the group that comes together and makes the steps, writes down the steps that they think would be needed to carry out these strategies. And then once those action steps are written, then it's up to the implementation teams to carry them out. So, over the summer, the last time we did Long Range Plan, we had groups of people with each section. So, for this, we would have three different groups working on the strategies and then they would bring forward the action steps.
All right. Any other questions for our groups? Before I give you a final thank you, I'll ask for community comment with respect to any of the reports that were received in the Superintendent's Report section of the agenda, which is the proposed bylaw, or language change and the Long Range Plan update. All right, seeing none, thank you. And this then leads to a final opportunity for public comment on a non-agenda item. If anyone would like to offer a final public comment with respect to an item that was not on this evening's agenda, please feel free to do that at this time. And if not, I thank you for attending this evening's meeting. For the rest of the, for the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss negotiations between the district and the Wauwatosa Education Support Professionals. Statutory exemption to Wisconsin Open Meeting Law contained in Section 19.85 Sub-1 Sub-E applies and also pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 Sub-C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to discuss potential impact of decisions relating to the World Language Program on current staffing. If we can have a motion to move into executive session, that would be helpful. Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mrs. Galante, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes. So, we'll take about a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene in executive session.